Regular meeting of the Village of Riverside Planning and Zoning Commission for February 28, 2018. Would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Chairperson Mathieu.
I am here.
Commissioner Hanen.
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Here.
Commissioner Marho.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Scanlon.
Here.
Absent is Commissioner Palatier.
So some of us sent Director App some corrections to the minutes, so would somebody like to make a motion to approve the Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting and public hearing minutes from January 24, 2018 with those changes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the amendments and adjustments that have been submitted to Sol.
Would somebody like to second that?
Second.
I'll approve.
Aye.
Everybody who was in attendance, so, all right, same for the special joint meeting of the Board of Trustees and Planning and Zoning Commission minutes of February 1, 2018 with those edits. Somebody make a motion? To approve those minutes?
I can make the motion to approve the minutes with the edits that were submitted to Director App.
Would somebody like to make a second?
Second.
I'll approve.
Aye.
Aye.
And abstain?
Aye.
And I abstain. Thank you. We have no visitors. We have no liaison. Director App, can you give us a village board update?
I can. The variance on gauge was before the village board at their last meeting, and they went over the findings that were submitted to them, and I think similar to you, they kind of struggled through that discussion, and ultimately, they decided to overturn your recommendation and recommend and approve it, so we've drafted an ordinance that will be before them tomorrow for the village board. They struggled again with it being just being as minimum a size as it needed to be, and the fact that it was centered between those two posts. They felt that that was a reasonable request. They were not asking anything too, too large, and that the, trying to do something smaller or perhaps in a different location was going to take away from sort of the architectural integrity of the existing porch and the house as a whole. So ultimately, there was enough of a consensus to direct staff and the village attorney to draft an ordinance approving it. So that's on their agenda for tomorrow, and presumably, it will, will be approved, given the consensus that was there at the board, but, you know, we can't say for certain. So, that's where we're at with that one, so I'll have a final note on that. Their other recommendation was that, given some of the confusion about whether it was a porch or whether it was a stoop, they asked that staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission kind of work through that and see how we can clarify that, and if there's a way to amend the code to accommodate something more like what was proposed at 173 gauge. Additionally, with, in regards to impervious surface, since nobody really had any issue with them having a net reduction in impervious surface, even though they were still over their 50%, they thought that that should be something, there was consensus, that should be something perhaps we extend to all residents that happened to be over that 50% mark, that if you are going to bring it down below what it currently is, you know, take away something that you should be allowed to do that without having to go through the variance process. So that's some language we'll, we'll try to be working through here in the future, specifically at our, at our next meeting, so. We'll get into a little bit more of that a little bit later on in the agenda. So that's kind of the board update at this point.
Thank you.
If there's anything you want to add to that, trustee sent me.
No, I think you did just fine.
Okay.
I wanted to say that I watched the two and a half plus hours of the special joint meeting, and I thought it was wonderful. I appreciate what you and Attorney Malini, Melina did, and I think we all learned a lot, and the commissioners submitted some fantastic questions. You guys did your homework beforehand, and just really appreciated it, and now we have it for future commissioners to watch and learn from. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next on our agenda is a continued discussion and recommendations to staff on possible changes to regulations on attached garages. Ooh, we have another visitor. Welcome, trustee Palatier. Director App?
Note that he arrived late, please.
Dooley, no.
Actually, one question. Are we taking off ETC now, or?
Um, no, but Jessica, I think, and President Salzfeld, given the board's review of the attached garage discussion, it would be helpful to kind of have, for have that discussion in its entirety as being referenceable, since there was no public hearing for tonight, so. All righty. So, at our last meeting, we started talking about attached garages. We went through some of the different regulations that other communities have, and in the course of that discussion, you, the commissioners, asked me to look into driveway regulations and what some other communities do. So I did provide you with kind of a summary of some of the same communities that we surveyed for the garage survey. So, in Riverside, we restrict driveways for detached garages to a maximum 10-foot in width, but they are allowed to widen to the width of the garage in the rear yard. The approach of the garage is called the garage apron, and it can only extend out 20 feet from the face of that detached garage. So you can have it kind of as wide as the garage is for 20 feet coming out from the garage, and then it has to start tapering to that, that 10-foot width. For front-loaded garages, they're not allowed to exceed the width of the garage. We also do require a, a separation, so if there's going to be any sidewalk that's going to run parallel to the driveway, there is required to be like a three-foot landscaped separation between those two, so you don't end up kind of morphing into a, you know, 23-foot or whatever with garage, there is that, that separation. So, I think I have that in the, in the materials I provided you, but I didn't put it in the, in the staff report. We do have restrictions on aprons, so driveway aprons are those approaches that come from the street, you know, so that actual like curb cut. Those are allowed to have three-foot flares, so then like your total width of a driveway at the street is going to be like 16 feet for a detached garage, where it's going to be a little bit wider, obviously wider than that for an attached garage. In our code, it says that driveways are limited to 16 feet at the curb for detached garages, which equates to that 10-foot with the three-foot flares, and they're limited to 24 feet in width for attached garages. There is a conflict between the private driveway width in our municipal code and the zoning ordinance. One specifically says 16 feet, and then the other says the width of the garage for, for the private driveway size, so that is something that we'll have to kind of address in our, our update, is to make sure that those two, two match, depending on which way we want to go. Some of the trends I observed in the other communities are that, there's three of them that restricted the amount of front yard that could be occupied for a driveway. So either by a maximum square footage, or by a percentage of the required front yard on one of those, those two, or even a lineal width, like the width of the driveway couldn't be more than like a third, I think it was, of the lot width. So those are kind of some interesting things that communities are doing for trying to restrict how much driveway you have in the front yard. A majority of the communities have a maximum width restriction at the property line, and it ranged from 16 feet to 25 feet. So this is at the front property line, not that curb cut size, so to speak, at the street. One community did have a tapering requirement, and there they required that the driveway must taper down after 15 feet. So it can be the width of the garage for 15 feet coming out from the face of the garage, but then it has to, to taper down. And you also asked to look at some building separation requirements. So, in the International Residential Building Code, it requires a minimum building separation of three feet. So anything less than three feet require some sort of fire guarding, fire resistance rated walls, et cetera. So Riverside requires a 10-foot separation between the principal and accessory buildings. Couple other, two other communities require that 10-foot separation, one requires 15, but many communities follow, kind of follow the building code regulations with some maybe slight modifications to it. Either by requiring a slightly thicker, fire resistance rated wall, you know, I think ours is, I forget now, five-eighths? Some of them require, or, so some of them require five-eighths rather than, I think, the half inch that, that we require. So, there's a little bit of difference, but they all seem to be somewhere between the three to five foot range. So some of them will require, just follow the building code requirement period, so it's the three feet. Other ones follow that same rating, but then they increase the amount. So, you know, you can be four feet or five feet away. If you're less than five feet or less than four feet away, then you have to provide that fire rating. So there's nobody that goes less than three feet and, and doesn't require that, that fire rating. So, that's kind of the summary of kind of where the building separation requirements are. Like I said, most people just follow the building code, but there are a few that, similar to us, have that larger separation requirements. So, um, so that was kind of the information that I had provided for you, so what we can kind of do is have a little bit more discussion about the driveways, what we'd kind of like to see. Joel was kind enough to do a little bit of analysis for us based on the, the last meeting we had, where I provided you the photographs of the different recent single-family homes that have been built. So he pulled together some information that I handed out for you. He took those homes and checks to see what their sale price was, how long they were on the market, so you can kind of see that information. And then he also pulled some recent sales for houses that had been remodeled or had additions done to them, and made a note of whether or not they had an attached garage or a detached garage. So you have that information in front of you.
This is great, thank you so much.
So that kind of gives you an idea of sort of the marketability of houses with detached garages or remodeled houses versus the, a brand-new single-family home, and kind of how long it takes to get those sold. There was a couple in here, like 245 Bartram, that was a tear-down, and that was actually purchased by the person who lives there and built the new house for themselves. Similarly, at Maplewood, that was a built-by-owner, so they, they had the house and, and tore it down and built a new house.
And 303 Selborn as well.
And I think 303 Selborn was the same thing. So that's some interesting comparisons. It seems to be a bit of a range. You have some that were only on the market for, it seems like 130 to 135 days, and then you have other ones that are on the market for 200-plus, 300-plus days in some cases, so, for the new single-family homes. And then you have the recent home sale information. You can kind of see, a lot of those are under, under 130 days.
We're not correlating the listing days with the attached or not-attached garage.
No, no, just.
I think if I may break in, in summary, and I don't think there is any definitive information or suggestion here, based on what I saw, that an attached garage either detracts or adds to the desirability of a house.
Uh huh.
And we're clearly looking at a certain price range. I, I don't, I don't think that, based on what I saw here, that we can, there can be any argument made that an attached garage will make your house sell faster or for a higher price. I think it just kind of falls within whatever the rest of the economic circumstances of the buyer are. And I did not know what to expect when I first started looking at this.
So, not relevant at all to our discussion about attached garages, but a comment on the driveway regulations.
Uh huh.
So for detached garages, the garage, or the driver can be the width of the garage, and then, starting at 20 feet, it has to start tapering, but there isn't any indication of how quickly it has to taper. So in theory, it could be.
Right, it's only allowed to widen to meet the garage in the rear yard.
Right.
So the expectation is basically by the time it gets to the side of the house, it really should be coming down to the 10 feet, and for certain, by the time it gets to the street yard, it has to be down to 10 feet.
Got it, so the, the whole of the year, rear yard, if it's deeper than 20 feet, it could stay conceivably at 19 feet until it gets to the side yard?
I mean, it, it needs to be.
Or, I'm sorry, you could just come in.
It has to start to taper.
Not 20 feet, right, it could just start to taper, but only.
It doesn't have, you know, it can be a more gradual taper at that point.
Got it, okay.
Yeah. Depending on what you have to work with, so.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Scanlon said, I do think it might be useful to have in the code a tapering sort of ratio or scale for most or all driveways, that would apply to most or all driveways. So after that first 20 feet, you have to taper at a certain rate of two to one, or something like that. That would be most useful, I think, visually for the, for the front-loaded garages, but it would also obviously impact on impervious surface. I know there's a cap on impervious surface that people can go up to, but I think it would be desirable to not have the impervious surface like big chunks of concrete or asphalt. So I think that would be useful. Otherwise, yes, someone could start tapering back after 20 feet and go down to 19 or 18 and a half feet, and then have a long pad coming all the way out. I mean, there's nothing that stops that until they get closer to perhaps the side of the house, when they'd have to taper down to get by this, the side of the house.
Uh huh.
So I think that would be useful. But particularly with the front-loading garages, because current provision for that, there should be some rate of tapering for that, definitely, I think.
One comment I had at the last meeting, you know, at least in my mind, you know, this comes down to how much concrete is in front of the house, and I think we had a little bit of discussion of that. And as I gave some more thought to the discussion, and this may go to your first point, that is there a restriction, or should there be a restriction on the amount of front yard that's occupied by driveway? But given the difference, wide variety of lot sizes that we have in Riverside, does it make sense to have a, for lack of a better word, a small lot, big lot difference? Because, you know, obviously with a smaller, narrower lot, the front-end garage, front-loaded garage is a necessity. You're not going to have the opportunity to have a side-loading garage or, or anything like that.
Uh huh.
But for some of the larger lots, you know, you can, you have more flexibility on what fits on the lot.
Correct.
So I, I, I don't know if that is something we want to add to the mix, but in my mind, you know, it was, it was a comment that was made, you know, some of the houses are on lots that are, stand, just call them standard lots, but not very deep. So the option for a garage is front-end loaded, that's really all they can do. And I think that's a different analysis than somebody with a very wide and deep lot that, you know, is, is putting the front end, front-loaded garage merely a convenience.
Correct.
Well, I'm not sure that I agree with you, because there were a lot of older houses that were built on narrower lots, and they simply have a driveway that goes by the side of the house. And then traditionally, it seems like you'd have a detached garage back there, but I don't know why you couldn't have like a rear attached garage.
And, and I guess, yeah.
That would reduce the concrete in the front of the house a lot.
And, and that's a great point, and I should have been clear. It's not just width, but depth as well. I mean, when I say there's, there's narrow lots, they're, they're not very deep.
Right, right.
So the option to go back doesn't exist, but.
To, to a detached garage, you mean?
Anything in the back, any.
Well, so if you have a pad in the front, and you have your front-loading garage, and you have, you know, the setback is whatever it is, 25 feet, and you have a solid chunk of concrete coming from the street, which the current ones, I think, have been built that way, goes straight to the garage, you have a big mass of concrete there. But if you didn't have that, I would think, not being an architect, it would be possible to just put that in the back of the house.
If there is enough room in the back.
So you have a narrow driveway, yeah, but I, I don't know.
I think some like, some end lots on the end of blocks don't even really.
Some like corners and stuff.
They wouldn't afford room in the back, which is, I think, I don't know, you, that you're specifically talking about end lots on the end of a block, but I've seen those that aren't very deep. I, you might struggle to put a rear-loaded garage on some of those lots, that they're just not deep enough, and that might be what Commissioner Hanen was trying to get to.
That's exactly it.
Well, yeah, then I think I agree, you have to have, I mean, some lots are trickier than others, but some of those, I think, have garages that go onto the other street, right? Not the front-facing street, but the side.
Some do, some, some do. Not all, you know, depending on how the, the lot, how the block is done, they aren't on both streets, they're just on the end. So, to your point, Commissioner Hanen, would, would the percentage of a lot space that's taken up by the driveway meet your concerns? Or you're thinking even if the same percentage is applied for a small block versus, excuse me, a small lot versus a large lot, just using that same percentage, you could end up with a lot of concrete on a bigger lot for a front-loaded garage? So even like a percentage wouldn't achieve what you're trying to, what you're, you know, trying to get to the point that you're making?
And it goes to sort of my question is, you know, we have a question of, does the garage have to be front-end loaded, given the, you know, we want people with backyards, don't want the entire backyard to be filled with an apron and a, and a detached garage or a garage, attached garage in the back? But, you know, if you have a very large lot, and you can really put the garage anywhere, and it's just a convenience to have the front-end loaded garage, is, is that, that convenience weighed against the aesthetic of what we're looking for that was brought up by the Landmarks Committee? And do too many of these take away from what makes Riverside a landmark status?
And I, and I guess I would raise the question, do we as a body feel that this is even something we need to wade into? I mean, I know landmarks had discussion about it and voiced some concerns, but quite honestly, other than that, I'm not sure that I've been convinced that this is a topic that must be addressed at this point.
Well, the village board did direct us to take a look at it and make some recommendations. So, that's, you know.
And I guess what would we base these recommendations on, other than a somewhat ambiguous concern that the landmark status might be threatened at some unknown point in the future, depending on some unknown number of front-loading garages of unknown-spaced driveways?
So, that's a fair point. I think you can look to our current zoning ordinance, and when that was drafted, you know, based on the regulations that we have in there, there was definitely, definitely an intent in wanting to try to minimize the impact of attached front-loaded garages, trying to incentivize people to do side-loaded or rear-loaded garages. They did put in restrictions on, you know, driveway width, things like that. So I think there was some intention in the crafting of our current zoning code to try and do that, and I think the Preservation Commission, in looking at it, they appreciated that that was there, because they did not realize that there was any sort of regulation in there at all regarding those. So they were happy to see that there was something there, you know, but their concern again was, well, if these people are building exactly what our code allows, and there still seems to be some sort of detriment to the character in the aggregate, what can we do to better achieve what the code was trying to do? And to try to minimize the impact that they're having. I think there was an understanding that you're probably not going to get away from having attached front-loaded garages, but is there a way to better regulate it to kind of reach what we're trying to do? There were some, some commissioners that, straight off of that, were like, if we could get away with banning them, I would. But that was not everybody. And they think they understood that, that would probably be a difficult, a difficult move to make. So, they're not the zoning experts, so to speak, they just kind of said their piece, made their recommendation, and asked that that be something that the Planning and Zoning Commission and the village board look into. And so that's, you know, the board concurred that, you know, they can have an impact, and they're not necessarily saying that they would adopt a change, but they certainly felt that it was worthwhile to look into this and see what kind of regulations could be crafted or changes could be made to minimize the impact of attached front-loaded garages. The other thing they wanted to look at was, you know, the sustainability aspect of it, so.
No, Director App, my recollection was that the, that there was a trend among the newly constructed houses, that substantially all of them were front-end loaded. Is that a correct recollection?
Yes.
Okay, so I think, Commissioner Mendoza, I think that, that goes to, at least in my mind, a justification for the concern of, is this a trend that, as, as tear-downs occur, is, is the market, for lack of a better word, or, or some desire to have the front-end loading garage, something that we need to be out in front of? So I think that, in my mind, is what drove this in, in front of us.
And last one, I think this commission was pretty clear that we didn't want to recommend banning front-loaded garages, right?
There's no interest in that.
Right, because it seems to be what the market is demanding. Do we want to restrict it to one-car front-loading garages?
Absolutely not.
Because that could incentivize a side-loading, rear-loading attached garage.
I have a few thoughts on that.
I'd like to hear.
Well, I think, the idea of having any front-loaded garages could, could concern a ban on that in like our 188 district, or certain of the more architecturally valued streets in Riverside, especially in the Pacific. Particularly, because those lots are larger, and they're important, it's quite easy to put a garage in the back of those houses, either a rear-attached, side-attached, or detached garage. So it's not like they're asking someone to have a hardship. And I do think, looking at the house aesthetically, looking at the houses on the narrower lots, I think there is, you know, there is an attraction for me to putting a limit on the amount of facade, just as we have in our current zoning code, that can be taken up by a garage. Right now, it's 50%, so basically we're saying, the car gets 50% of the facade, the house gets 50% of the facade. I would, facade, I would like seeing that be something like 35 or 33%, which would effectively, on a narrow lot, mean that you have to have a single garage door, which could still allow for a tandem garage, but a single garage door. Because I do think it does affect the appearance of the village. I mean, we all know about, you know, subdivisions and what they look like, and it seems like, I don't, it wouldn't, I don't think it would benefit the property owners of Riverside to have tear-downs being rebuilt as something that could be in a subdivision in the far suburbs.
Thoughts on that?
I think if we go too far here and start restricting property rights, and I know the code in and of itself is one giant property restriction, but when you're talking about the current demands for housing and the current features that people want, a ban of front-loading garages or a restriction to single front-loading garages, and I'd be really interested to hear the builders' input and the developers' input on this, I could see that being a real turn-off and detriment to the desire to invest in this community if there's going to be those kinds of restrictions. And that only not affects the specific lots that would want to do that, but if there is a downturn in demand and attractiveness for this community, that affects the community as a whole.
Your point is taken, but I don't, and that was part of the reason I looked at those sale prices. I don't think there's any evidence that, like I said earlier, that where the garage is, is a significant effect on price or end desirability of houses in town. I think there's a lot of other things that come into play, obviously, when people are looking at buying here. The one. The one thing, and the restriction on property rights is duly noted, I think we have a nine foot restriction on each garage door, which I think that is a sufficient proxy for the width requirements, because if, Sonia, could you correct me, please? We only allow two garage doors?
Well, that could be my next topic. Do we want to restrict it to just two doors, not allow three?
I, I don't know the, I didn't see anything.
I think for the front loading attached garages, you can only have two single doors. You can't have one large door.
Right.
Right. We don't have a restriction on whether you can have a two car garage or a three car garage. We simply limit it to 50% of the width.
And each garage door is nine feet wide?
Cannot, yeah, can't be greater than nine feet wide. We don't get into a two car versus three car.
So if somebody had a super wide lot, conceivably they could do three.
Okay, thank you. The one thing that struck me as looking at your material, Sonia, and thank you for putting that together, as well as the ordinance itself, is I'm not, in terms of creating some equality, I'm not certain where the idea came in that a front loading driveway or a driveway serving a front loading garage gets to be wider than a driveway that serves the back, i.e. a driveway serving the back is 10 feet wide, driveway serving the front can be as wide as the garage itself. And that's, that's actually where I'd rather go is to, if we're looking at equalizing our restrictions and looking at reducing the width of concrete in the front yard, I mean, I think a relatively clean and easy way would be to say, at the property line, your driveway has to be 10 feet. And that would automatically bring down some of our width, width issues.
Unless people put their house further back in the lot.
Well, we still require that you, after 20 feet, it has to taper down and.
But some, with probably in some of these lots, people have their houses fairly close to the streets, so you might not be able to taper down past that, but I think.
Right. For instance, you might have somewhere, like I think, um, the new house that's being built on Y and L, and I think the house that was built next to it, I want to say their setback is only like maybe 31 or 32 feet, um, from the front property line. If, if it can only be 10 feet wide at the front property line.
If your number is correct, then 30 feet minus the 20 feet we allow you to be, 20 feet long, or sorry, however deep, in front of your house, that means there's 10 feet left. You have 10 feet to narrow down to, from 20 to 10. That actually gets to what we're talking about, and the builders last month had mentioned that they were somewhat amenable to that.
And the 20 feet.
Maybe not explicitly, but that was.
20 feet restriction is what we use for the detached garages, so we don't, you know, obviously don't have that in this. We have the one community that did 15 feet. I would almost prefer to see it be 15 feet. I mean, that's, you know, you can only come out 15 feet from the house before you have to start tapering, um, down to a minimum, for, for front loading.
I, I would agree with you there, although I think again, for equality, you apply the same apron size to a rear side, maybe not side, but maybe rear or detached garage in the back. The apron should be 15, you know, 15, 16 feet. And I think it's doable, even with a very large car, to have it start tapering. But when, kind of picking up on one of your points, I think it's interesting in the code, it talks about how you can't have a garage in the front yard, but because of building imperatives, we have front loading garages in the front yard, so it just seems slightly inconsistent to me.
Not, not to bring the discussion back, but I just want to echo a point that Commissioner Mendoza made. I, I, I share his view that, um, restricting two car garages, front loading two car garages, is going to restrict, um, you know, future building. I mean, I think the trend was, the new houses that were built are two car front loading garages. So going down a path where, you know, do you need a, only a one car garage, if it's front loading, I think is counterproductive, uh, to what we're trying to do. And I share the concern that that will drive, uh, builders and people who are looking to repurpose, uh, properties that might not have been as well maintained as they should have been and need replacement or, or improvement, um, and just have them go to the next community. So I think that's, that was a great point, and I would like to echo that as, as sharing my feelings as well.
And I think that's a great point. This housing stock, you know, in large part is old housing stock, and some of them, over time, will have to come down. And we want to encourage, you know, we don't want these houses just rotting away because there's no attractiveness to redeveloping them. So you don't want to overly restrict what people can do in trying to repurpose some of the old housing stock that probably the time has come to do that.
Well, I would admit that I'm, I'm not a builder or a developer or anything like that, but I do think there should be some, there was a reference, I think, at the Village Board meeting about residents, potential future residents and what they might desire in a house. And I would just say, what a potential future resident might desire in a house, I don't think it's the same as what a builder wants to build. I think a builder wants to build what they think is appealing and attractive and profitable for them. And so if someone wants to move to Riverside and they can only afford so much house, they may buy that newer house rather than the older house because it's nicer, closer to school, whatever, but that might not, they might not necessarily want a front loaded garage, it's just that what they're being offered.
Yeah, but the builders will build what they think they can sell, and that'll be dictated by the market.
But also what they think they're going to make them as profit off of. Anyway, I think there's, there's, there's certain tractions to not having front loaded garages. I mean, I think there are a lot of people there that don't necessarily want a front loaded garage.
I agree, but there's a lot of things in this town that personally I find unattractive. I'm not going to tell people they can't do. And that's, that's the conundrum.
Yes.
That is the conundrum.
Well, I would point out, the materials that Sonia gathered, Wheaton does restrict to width. I think they're probably the most restrictive of the villages as far as driveways is, but also facade. And they would say 33% of facade, so we wouldn't exactly be in how much, if we considered them competing with Wheaton, they've not done that.
And, and I think the debate of why do builders build is, is the exact caution that we need to take. We, we can't be in the game of, are builders building what people demand or building what they want, hoping to sell? Who cares? You know, if, if, if the new development is two car front end loaded garage, there has to be a reason behind that, whether it's the market or the builders or whatever, but that's what rebuilds are being structured as today. So I think we have to be cautious not to do anything that would, um, cause a builder or someone who would otherwise be inclined to fix up a house that would otherwise be torn down or, or repurpose a house, uh, to move on to the next community, because it just doesn't make any sense. Then we're stuck with a aged housing stock that, that just is not going to command top dollar, and then you start to have an economic spiral.
So let's tie up some ends that are dangling. What about Commissioner Miller's suggestion that there be a difference in design allowances for A and AA? What are your thoughts on that?
I would say no, um, on the basis of the fact that as we look at our zoning map for the public, a lot of, or, sorry, a lot, wrong words, substantial percentage of AA is actually in the, no, excuse me, Gatesby area, which were mid-century houses, I believe, and those did tend towards front loaded garages. And as Adrian and Ed noted, there, everyone has different desires. So, summary, I'm not sure that we suddenly magically make AA the place where you can't find a front loaded garage.
I don't think that's what you were suggesting. Were you suggesting that in A it's a one car door? And in AA you have two one cars? Well, what I was suggesting was actually to ban the front loading garages in the AA district, only because I think what the Preservation Commission's concerned is the, if you drive down Nuttall, if you drive down Scottsville, those are the areas. And, and maybe it wouldn't be all of AA, although I don't know legally if that gets us into more trouble, because all of a sudden, just choosing a few select streets, or if it's a broader area, um, we wouldn't have the same problem. But just because of the, you know, the aesthetic of Riverside and the big lawns and, you know, all the rest, if you're seeing a double door garage there in some of these areas on a wide lot, maybe it's three cars, maybe it's three and a half car front loading garage on a wider lot, then that is going to make it. So I think architecturally, that when you look at a house that's been designed without a garage on its front, it looks very different typically than a house that's been designed with a garage stuck into it. And there are even houses that either were planned or later on they had a garage put next to them, and that still looks different because of the architectural appearance of the house. I'm guessing that's what the Preservation Commission was getting at a little bit, as well as the expanse of concrete that you see as you drive down. Instead of driving down 10 foot driveway, 10 foot driveway, all of a sudden you have 20 foot driveway, 20 foot driveway. Okay, so thank you for that clarification.
And my concern with that proposal is you do have lot size within that area that are not necessarily very wide and/or very deep. And, and so are we, we handspringing those property owners? You know, I think we all, in those areas, I, I agree with Commissioner Miller, that the desire would be to have the garages either side loaded or, or in the back, but there's certain lots that's just not possible. So I, I, I sort of stumble back to, is it not necessary location, but is it lot size that should dictate? You know, if there is, if there is a choice to go front loading or back loading and it's for a mere convenience, you know, do we want to consider rules that incentivize a, a, a rear, rear loading or, or, uh, side loading structure?
Or a tandem?
I would concur with what Commissioner Han said. I think you need at least a 75 foot wide lot, if not 100 foot wide lot, to do a side load garage, I would think. And, you know, if we were going to go down the path of saying, if you have a certain lot size, you should, you should be required to do one or the other, I think it doesn't matter where in the village it is. Might as well say, if you have this wide a lot, you know, if we were to go down that path, if you have this wide a lot, you're, you know, you're not allowed to do a front loading garage. I'm not necessarily ready to go there yet with that concept, but I don't necessarily know that the location in the village is as important to me as does the lot support it or not support it.
Because of the entire size of the entire square footage of the lot as opposed to the frontage?
Well, it has to be frontage, right?
Because you're saying some, some lots, if they're narrow, if they're not very deep, then you can't really put a garage anywhere else other than in the front anyway.
Right. For instance, 103 Blooming Bay, that's one of our newer ones. That was a substandard lot that's in the 101 AA district. So it's restricted to 45% for its impervious surface versus 50%. So even though it's only like a 7,000 square foot lot, um, it's restricted to 45%. However, it is 75, I think it was just shy 75 feet wide. So it did basically meet the lot width requirement, but it was significantly deficient in its charia. Because of the shallowness of it, um, you know, the previous house was a smaller house. The previous house had a detached garage on it, um, with a driveway that came out, and I believe it did exceed its impervious surface restrictions in, in totality. I think it was just, it was under 50, but I think it was over 45% with the, um, the driveway and kind of a turnaround and patio and some other things that they had in the backyard. For them to make a house work, um, you know, their, you know, their idea was that, A, it was going to be difficult to build a new house that was going to meet what the market wanted and be able to build a two car detached garage in the back and meet the building coverage and impervious surface restrictions. Like that was just not going to happen, um, just in trying to get the driveway back there, the 10 foot separation requirement, all of it in its totality really made it not.
Be hard for them.
Was, was going to be really hard for them to, to redevelop it. And they really felt, and I have to kind of agree, that the, the state of the house that was there at that time was so far gone that it was, it would be a very expensive rehab. So really, you know, tearing it down was, you know, not a heartbreaking thing for me, for me to see. But so they, they, you know, they built a car with a two car, two car attached front loaded garage because that's what they can do. I think even if they had tried to do a side loaded, again, you have to take into consideration for a side loaded garage. Say they just had the garage on the side, and they don't really have room in the back to put it back behind the house, but just have it on the side, you still have to have at least 20 feet in depth for that garage. So you're still talking essentially the same width as that garage was, but then you need to be able to have that approach to be able to make that turn to get into that garage. And that's where you start to getting into trouble with, with lot width with the side load garages, is what width you need to make that turn to be able to get into the garage. So, you know, we, we allow for that 20 foot, you can have that 20 foot apron that comes out from the face of the garage for either a rear loaded or a side loaded garage and come out, and then it can, then it has to taper down with that 10 feet as it comes forward into the, into the street yard. So that's one of those things where, you know, a 75 foot wide lot may or may not be able to accommodate a side loaded garage. If you have a 100 foot wide lot, that should be an easy one and probably one that somebody would pick on a 100 foot wide lot. But maybe not, 200, Nuttall is more than 100 feet wide. I want to say it was actually a 110 foot wide lot. They did not go with a side loaded garage. You know, they went with, you know, for lack of a better word, two garages. You know, they've got a side loaded one car garage and then a front loaded two car garage, but it's, it's obviously set back, so it makes more of a garage courtyard kind of area over there versus your kind of traditional side load garage.
And again, it's the only house on the street that's like that. So again, it's the streetscape that kind of gets broken up in it, although it is pushed back, which is.
It is, is pushed far back. I think the other thing you think about is like over in that Gatesby, Udale area where it was redeveloped, there's a lot of those houses that have a side load garage attached. There's a lot of those houses that have, um, a side load garage that kind of pushes to the front, you know, so it's kind of like an L shaped house, so they come in like this to it rather than, you know, around the side. So the garage, the driveway actually kind of takes up that whole front of the house coming into that, that garage. And that's something that our code has written in that 2005 code, is specifically trying to move away from. So it doesn't allow that kind of side load garage, because your side load garage is only allowed to protrude a maximum of five feet from the main facade of the house. So that one, it doesn't want that kind of side load garage, it wants the other kind of side load garage where it's facing away from the main part of the house as opposed to like towards the main part of the house.
I mean, a lot of it comes on the individual design. There's a house right across from me that has that type of a side loaded garage, this is probably a 75 foot wide lot. It looks very nice. It might look better if it didn't have that, but it still looks very nice because of the way they've landscaped it and they blocked most of your vision of that driveway with hedging and other things like that. It actually looks quite nice. But I did want to ask one question about side loading garages.
Uh huh.
Are there, is there a type of side loading garage that the car comes at an angle? Because I thought I'd seen one like that somewhere in Riverside. So you'd have to come around and go to 90 degree, but you.
I think there are a few that they've built it, so it's, it's angled. I want to say actually, the, well, I suppose it, maybe it's technically your rear garage, but the one house that you showed, the, the Zooque House on Kent, they have, it's kind of a rear side loaded garage in the back, and it is kind of on an, an angle. But it is more, I would say it's almost all the way behind the house, but not, not completely.
I think a lot of that is related to lot configuration, but as Chairman Teo noted, there is a house on Nuttall, I think it's possibly 208 Nuttall, that has angled bays, but they're in the backyard.
It's in the back.
And there's one on Nuttall that has a true side loaded garage, and I think their apron is fairly narrow, but they get it in and out, so I doubt it's 20 feet, but it's, yeah.
I'd like to say, I, we're not necessarily here to debate aesthetics or marketability. What the market appears to demand right now can change. You clearly see that from houses that were built in 1900 versus 1950 versus today. The statement of marketability, I don't think. The statement of marketability, I don't think justifies what we're looking for. When we talk about a historically significant village, some of what we do with regards to our zoning is to protect that. And that's why we have setbacks and side setbacks and impervious requirements. And I think, to bring us back, and I might be wrong on this, but the reason this has come up is because we're looking at, there was a concern by Preservation Group that said, maybe we've gone too far, or maybe the market has gone too far, or whatever you want to say. But is there a way for us to bring us back to something that's more reasonable without being overly restrictive of property rights or designer creativity?
I mean, I think when you, A, we have something, and I think that says something to begin with. There's a lot of communities that don't really have any sort of design requirements on attached front-loading garages. And those that do are ones that have, you know, comprehensive plans and these large tear-down ordinances and special overlay districts and things like that. And that's not our surrounding area. They're not the ones that have these kind of things. So I think it speaks a lot that we have already tried to address the issue. You know, maybe it can just be small tweaks, you know? Maybe it is saying, you know, keeping the individual door requirement. Maybe we want to go a little bit further and say, no three cars for front-loaded, you know?
Wasn't the original concern, though, that there was a loss of green space and too much concrete?
That was a, that was a big concern, yes.
So if that's the concern, and we want to address that concern, shouldn't we try and figure out the least onerous and restrictive way that still gets us to that solution?
Right. And I think that was why the Commission wanted to look at the driveway restrictions and what we can do on that, because that is the most tangible way to say that we're dealing with the amount of green space that is being lost in the front with a front-loaded attached garage. Because obviously, it has to be the width of the garage to get into the garage. So, you know, so we can look into those maximum width requirements, tapering requirements. I mean, I didn't really see anybody that had a tapering ratio. You know, I've never really seen that anywhere. I have seen ones where it is like after fifteen feet, it has to come down, or after twenty feet, it has to come down. I've seen those in other communities. That's a fairly standard. A lot of communities don't want to give you a three-car wide curb cut onto their, onto their street. You know, that's, a lot of communities don't want that. So they restrict that in some, in some fashion. So, you know, easy fixes could be as simple as saying, okay, back in the nineties, we said we didn't want attached garage curb cuts to be bigger than sixteen feet. Let's go back to making sure that, you know, that at the property line, it's not wider than sixteen feet, and we say it has to start tapering after fifteen feet, can add that in there, so it has to taper down. So it's only sixteen feet at the property line, twenty-four feet at the curb to allow for those flares, you know, that they decide that they want. And then, you know, decide, do we want to be consistent and have a twenty, or is it more important in the front yard to minimize as much as possible and say, can we have fifteen in the front yard versus, you know, trying to be consistent? Because I think there's, it's valid to say, it's a bigger deal in the front yard than it is in the rear yard. If somebody feels strongly one way...
No, and I think that was part of the concern. I think Commissioner Mendoza said it, that it's too much concrete in the front is what it came down to. So using this as an excuse to have a restrictive standard in the back, going from twenty feet to fifteen feet even for the back, in my mind, isn't consistent, because we should be doing all we can to encourage, to the extent that the lot is large enough, to encourage people to put it behind the house.
Yeah.
So if you, if you say, here's, you know, the, you get fifteen feet if it's front-loading, you only get two-car garage if it's front-loading, and your curb cut is sixteen, but if it's back-loading, you can have twenty feet and you can have a three-car garage, as long as you're within the impervious surface limitation, why do we care?
I think you're right, Commissioner Han, in terms of the impervious restriction does serve to limit...
Absolutely.
And I don't know that we need to do, we already have a tool or a rule that restricts on its own. We don't need to add an additional restriction.
Right. For the rear yards?
Correct.
Right.
From what Commissioner Mendoza was saying, that's, your comment about the green space is exactly why I was suggesting a ten-foot requirement at the property line. Because in town, often it's not, the property line is actually a few feet back, and in some cases, many feet further towards the house from the sidewalk. And that gets towards maintaining that green space, especially...
That's public access.
If you were to do that and require the taper in the front, wouldn't you, almost by default, really discourage people from doing a three-car garage? Because you'd have a crazy reduction, which maybe that's what you want to do, you know, just without prohibiting it, you just make it so unattractive that they can't do it because it doesn't make sense.
Okay, so that's next on my list, because I think the majority are not in favor of having different rules for A and AA. Okay. What about if the lot is wide enough, do we want to allow a three-car front-loading garage? Because Geneva and Hope Park do not allow it, and possibly Wheaton, I don't recall on that one.
I'm disinclined to allow a three-car front-loading garage.
Do we currently?
We don't prohibit it.
It can't be more than fifty percent of the facade.
There are houses that have that. Isn't there at least one or two houses that have a three-car garage? Does anyone remember any? I don't like the idea.
In the front?
In the front. Isn't there one, okay, on like, is it Gage down by Harrington Park? There's a greenhouse, don't they have? Or maybe we only have two.
Well, this would be going forward.
Yeah, anyway, so I would, yeah, it's not something I would like to see.
It would be in the spirit of what preservation is...
Right. Although you will have a wider yard, so proportion is lesser.
Well, you can have more house.
Right. No, I, I...
Commissioner Han?
I'm just trying to do math, and it's been too long a day, that to have a three-car garage with the restriction that the garage only take up fifty percent of the front of the house, I mean, does that take care of itself?
If it's a wide lot, I think theoretically possible that they could...
We'll say thirty-foot wide for a three-car garage. It could be a little narrower, you know?
But does that, does that get to the tapering issue that we've, I think already agreed upon, that you want it, you know, tapering down quickly and does it take care of itself? I would hate to have a, you know, ban on three-car garages, you know, again, not knowing what the market holds, what the future holds. But our concern isn't three-car garages, our concern is the concrete in front of those garages. So for addressing that by saying you need...
I think fifteen, if we do fifteen feet, I think that's a harder...
It can't be done.
That might be a harder one to do for that, for that, that little outlier there to get, if it's only allowed to be, maybe for fifteen feet, that could be a little harder for them to get down to. If we say a maximum width of sixteen feet at there, certainly would be difficult, I think, if we set a maximum of ten feet.
You probably wouldn't be able to taper it, but arguably, if you wanted it, you could have a pad, and then you simply have an egress for that pad if you have to back up, you know? I mean, but it wouldn't, might not look that nice, but it's certainly doable.
And in my mind, it solves itself with the fifteen-foot turnaround area. You know, for example, if you have the three-car garage and one of them has bikes, you don't necessarily care what your turnaround area is. So it addresses, again, I go back, what is our concern? It's concrete in the front. And, you know, whatever you want to do with your house, if you meet that fifty percent frontage requirement, you know, it's not a sea of concrete in front of the house that we were concerned about.
And there would still be the restriction of the individual garage doors, so you wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't be having a three-car wide garage door. Nobody's talking about getting rid of the restriction on the individual door. So, you know, any three-car garage that's currently built would have to have those individual bays.
How do we interpret the fifty percent? Is that the garage walls are fifty percent, or the visual opening of the garage door, you know, from one side of the garage door to the opposite door? That has to be fifty percent.
Right. I go from the far edge of what is the garage to...
So the outer wall?
The outer wall.
Okay.
To whatever seems to be the demising line between the garage and the house. A lot of times, it is basically the very edge of, of the door, you know? The door closest to the main part of the house.
I really think the fifty percent is, it's troublesome to me. And realize, if you have a forty-foot wide house, it would be hard to put a two-car garage. But fifty, I mean, having an equal amount for the entry of the house and the entry of the garage, just, I've seen a lot of houses like that, I just don't think they look...
Yeah, but that wasn't...
Again, if we're dealing with concrete, it shouldn't make any difference, but if we're dealing with streetscape, look as well.
Well, and that, if you want to, you know, part of it is, okay, do you require it to be set back five feet versus coming forward five feet? So if you make sure it has a five-foot setback, and then you take into account the fact that now we allow the front porches to encroach into that street yard, so maybe that gets you even more sort of separation between quote-unquote "the entrance, the face of the home to the garage."
I think visually, that would help a lot.
If people, you know, if people choose to do that.
Just to go straight, because my thinking on not having three cars on a wide lot is, I'm also trying to figure out, how do we incentivize the side of rear-loading? And if you have a large lot, and you want three cars, and you can't put it in the front, well, you have to put it in there or on the side. And in fifty years, people might not have three cars.
To your, to your most recent point, you could do something like twenty feet or forty percent, whichever is larger.
Okay.
So, you know, the people with the forty-foot wide houses could have twenty feet.
So put a foot net cap on it, you know? Maybe something...
They would be able to get more than that.
We don't have any restriction on the number of garage spaces that you can have on your lot, right? I mean, whether it's front-loading or not, it's not like you can only park three cars in a garage somewhere on your lot.
No. We have a mass, I mean, subtly, we do. So for like detached garages, you can't have a detached garage that exceeds eight hundred square feet. So that's a four-car garage. So subtly, we do. It really only applies to detached garages. For front, it's, you know, what your lot will allow you to do if you want an attached garage.
And you're talking something about the face of the garage, not the depth, because there's certainly garages that are more than four cars because they're tandem in town, right? So you're talking about four-car width.
I'm talking about in square footage. So typically, a garage, like a twenty-by-twenty, a twenty-by-twenty is your fairly typical two-car garage. That's two side-by-side pulling in, nothing tandem. You know, you can do eight hundred square feet so that they're tandem, that's still hitting four cars. So we just have a restriction of eight hundred square feet, and typically, eight hundred square feet is not really going to fit more than four cars.
Got it. So the ones that are bigger than that are just grandfathered in, before the code. Got it.
And I did want to comment also, before I forget, about the concept of the massive concrete. I think if we could nibble away around at the edges, if we were to, perhaps now, the apron can be from garage wall to garage wall. I think at least one or two of these communities limited to the garage opening, so you narrow it maybe by a foot on either side. And then I do think that flare at the end is excessive. I haven't seen any driveway walking around that has a three-foot flare on either side. I think like one and a half foot or two-foot flare on either side is more than sufficient, myself, again, to nibble away at the amount I have for you.
So I'm not sure we've reached consensus on three doors in the front.
I don't think we have yet.
I would not outright ban them. I think it's such an outlier, that the possibility of them being, you know, if you get more than one or two, I'd be shocked. And if they are able to do it, then you're talking about a big lot, so it might work, actually.
Then again, if we have the driveway restrictions where at the property line, it can't be wider than a certain amount, and it can't come out more than fifteen feet at the full width, that might disincentivize having it be front-loaded versus side-loaded or in the rear.
There's a suggestion of fifteen-feet apron for attached garages. Do we want to make it the same for detached garages, just in the spirit of having more, less concrete in the Village of Riverside, which voted for sustainability?
That's why I would agree with you, right? Let's see what your point is.
It applies for front-end loading?
For detached and attached.
Both front-end loading?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No. We're talking garages in the back.
Before thinking fifteen in the front, do we want to restrict it to fifteen for detached garages as well?
Oh, absolutely not.
Yeah, that's your incentive, to have them, put them in the back, they get a little bit more space.
I tend to agree with Adrian and Adam, that allowing, giving that incentive to be in the back is helpful to us. And it's not, it does not become that onerous. I'm not sure the five-foot decrease makes that much of a difference when you start talking about people and their patios and other impervious items in the backyard.
A lot of people have asphalt patios in their backyard.
I would like to leave it at the twenty feet. For people with very deep lots and where the house is very close to the driveway, they want to turn around before they come out, as opposed to backing down a very long driveway, where the driveway comes right up to the foundation of the house, because it gets very narrow. I know several houses like that, where they want to turn around, and I'd be worried that cutting it to fifteen feet, does that leave you enough space with more than one car on the drive to do the turnaround? Now, maybe that's, you know, example is so small that it's insignificant to...
But we do have an allowance, you know, we do have an allowance in the code that says, in the rear yard, you can provide for a turnaround area. So that is kind of that little gift that we give you to be able to be wider than your garage door, if you need to be able to provide that turnaround area.
Got it. Okay. So regardless of that, though, I'd be inclined to just leave it at the twenty feet. I'm not inclined to narrow that to fifteen.
We have consensus in some things. It sounds like from Director App, the tapering ratio probably is not going to be readily forthcoming, but do we want to say, you need to taper by a certain location? And I'm looking at you to say, yeah, that's going to happen?
Well, I think, you know, I think for, saying that you can only come out fifteen feet from the garage kind of forces that taper to happen, and then however they want to figure it out to get to a maximum width at the property line, you just need to figure out what that maximum width is. I appreciate your point about the ten feet. I don't know, there's not a single other community out there that restricts it to ten feet for an attached garage. So for attached garages, the minimum I saw out there was sixteen feet, which I think...
For a taper?
For the maximum width at the property line.
Oh, well, I guess, kind of, in the interest of being, I follow what you're saying, but I think in the interest of what we're talking, what the Preservation Commission had noted, and in the interest of equalizing rear garages and front garages, having a ten-foot wide restriction or limit at the property line, I don't think is too onerous. And it actually gets us towards some of the other concerns we've had with regards to number of garages. The architect who was in attendance last month noted that that, more subtle restrictions encourage them in some ways to be creative in their designs, and might serve to push garages further back on the lot without us necessarily putting a hard line in the sand.
Just so I'm clear, is, Commissioner Marhol, is your proposal, we have ten feet width, but the sixteen feet at the curb, which is currently allowed for detached garages in the back? So it would be the same standard?
That's what the flares, that maximum curb cut width is, is sixteen feet.
So the same... So the same standard would apply regardless of whether it's a front-loading garage or a back-loading garage?
That's what he's proposing.
Yes, that's correct.
So you drive in on 10-feet, basically, once you cross the sidewalk?
Like ever, yes.
And then at some point, it flares to the upper?
Correct. And I think that's relatively easy for everyone who's looking at the ordinance to understand as well.
I mean, I think practically, you know, again, thinking of houses I know, because of the size of the lots, some of these that have front-loading garages, they basically have to taper because they don't have the room because they're on a funny corner or something like that. So what's, I don't think we can decide here what's practical, but I agree that most things can be made practical if you have to do it. Physically, you're limited. Therefore, if you don't have that physical limitation, you can still, you can still get it done. It might not be what you normally do. But some of these pictures, you know, show just a straight shot of driveway with no attempt to taper at any point whatsoever because presumably it was nice and easy to pour the concrete or something. I don't know.
To be honest, one of the reasons I favor it is because the audience, who was mostly made up of builders, somewhat proposed it, at least in my mind. Now, if I have the wrong interpretation, I'll give them that. But that's what I heard.
I would say, I think I heard a couple of, from a couple of builders, concerns on what that minimum width would be if we went that route. So I think there was concern that you would make it 10-feet for an attached garage similar to what was a detached, and they weren't sure if that was going to be workable.
They could have been in attendance at the meeting as well.
Would it be possible to have a different width depending on the size of the front-end setback? So if you have a very short side-end setback, I don't know if that's desirable or possible. Whereas if you have a 40-foot setback, well, it's easy to taper down to 10-feet. If you've got an 18-foot setback, maybe you should...
Less so.
Isn't that what the variance process is for, then?
But we don't necessarily want to get lots of, I mean, maybe we actually have many tear downs, but probably we don't want to...
Right, I mean, with new construction, in general, you can have a hard time proving. It's a bit of a harder threshold for your building from scratch to prove the need for a variance, so...
But in my mind, and that's a point well taken, that we're trying to craft a rule based on unique lots and special circumstances. And, you know, in my mind, that's what, you know, we can't anticipate what quirky lot in Riverside someone's going to build on. I mean, there's a lot of quirky lots. And there's going to be some things where our, you know, 15-feet plus a 10-foot wide approach isn't going to make any sense. So there, you know, in my mind, there has to be some avenue in these special circumstances to say, this is not consistent, you know, the objective is to minimize concrete. And because of the lot, there's nothing we can do here.
I guess I just wish I knew what percentage of people are, we're going to have to come in for a variance. I like what you're proposing. I'm in favor of that. But if it means that because of lock configurations, that 50% of people are going to have to come in and ask for a variation, then I don't necessarily know that it's helpful to us or to the residents. It goes back to, you know, the concept of, you know, if enough people are asking for something, we should be considering whether we should be changing our policy. And I don't know how we get to that without a survey of every property to see if something is possible or not. So maybe we try it, and then, you know, if everyone wishes it would be able, we try it and then just see what kind of variances we're getting in.
Isn't it based on the setback? I mean, we have 15-feet coming off the width of the garage, and then it tapers down to 10. So if it's, if the setback is more than 15-feet, we know some portion of that has to taper down to 10. If it's less than 15-feet, then, you know, my view is that they get the full two-car garage coming all the way out because there's still...
So you're saying bake that in to the variance, depending upon your setback?
And to the ordinance?
To the ordinance, excuse me, thank you.
Or they have to come to us and say, you know what? My lot makes me in a unique situation, and I'm requesting a variance, which is why we have the process in the first place. We get...
But like Director App said, these will be new constructions.
So it's a different standard, right? The existing standards don't work.
So if you can tell upfront it's not going to work, that's where you can put your garage, in the back.
So guess what? Why do we have a front-loaded garage on 103 Blooming Bank? There's a good chance we have a front-loaded garage on 103 Blooming Bank because a detached garage required going through the variance process. And a front-loaded garage, they could just do by right and figure it out.
Okay, that's a good point.
So there's a disincentive to need to go through the variance process because it takes up time and it's not a guarantee. So with new construction, they're typically going to avoid the need for a variance just because it takes up time and it's not a guarantee.
Sure. I think we can see, though, that new construction is, it, there's a lot of time on the market, too. So I don't know that we're creating too much of a problem.
So consensus on 10-feet or not 10-feet? Width of the garage or tapering for front loaders?
I'm obviously a big proponent of the 10-foot at the property line.
And it looks like our previous requirement was 16-feet was the maximum width at the property line.
I like the proposal because it helps us to achieve what we were trying to achieve, which is reducing the amount of concrete in the front yard.
Is there any interest in restricting percentage? You know, no more than 50% of your street yard can be covered by driveway? Or do we want to go down that route? And there was a few communities that did that kind of...
I think with these other restrictions, we don't need that. Plus, we have the whole previous...
Wouldn't the 50% coverage already take that?
Yes.
Yeah.
I believe so, that the other restrictions we have on total frontage being occupied by the garage somewhat takes care of that, correct?
In the pictures we've been provided, I don't see any sidewalk that goes from the public sidewalk to the front of the house. Everybody has...
They typically have that little L coming off of it.
Yeah, that's still one.
You mean the one that's right along?
Right along.
Driveway?
Yes.
Which doesn't have the required three feet of, is it supposed to have three feet of grass in between of landscaping?
Three feet of landscaping between the walkway and the garage.
Okay, next on the list is protrusion. Right now, we allow garages to protrude at least five feet. Wait, no, wrong one. The garage could be five feet in front of the front building on the side of the house. Two other locations say the garage cannot be, has to be at least five feet back from the front of the house.
Could be in front of the house.
And one community has it the way we do where it can extend five feet in front of the house. Any thoughts on that?
Do we want to leave it the way it is? Or try and get them to push them back a little bit? I think the intent was to keep people from doing the big snout out the front.
The infamous snout house. I'd prefer to push it five feet beyond the front, behind the front door, but I can defer to other judgments as well.
I would also prefer to have it five feet behind. And I think visually, it's better if it's even 10 feet behind. I guess the choir five feet behind and suggest 10 feet behind. But the front back, I mean, I realize that increases him in a driveway, although if we have a tapering requirement, we're getting rid of some of that.
And Commissioner Miller, that's why I was conflicted about it. Aesthetically, I definitely prefer that it's pushed back from the front facade of the house. However, it does increase the amount of concrete in front. But I think for me personally, the aesthetics outweigh the increase in concrete. So therefore, I prefer that it's pushed back.
Again, because we have the overall impervious percentage, which someone can go up to their widow if they choose to. So, yeah, I think it would...
Right, however, we don't have a limit on impervious surface in the front yard. It's on the whole of the lot.
Right.
So that's why, you know, but like I said, summary, I prefer it's pushed back.
Again, I think the objective here is to minimize the concrete in the front. And one of the lessons I learned right away even before zoning commission is that we cannot zone against ugly houses. You know, I think if, saying there's a pushback that leads to more concrete seems to be inconsistent with our charge here. So my recommendation would be, you know, we already have a limitation from rejecting more than five feet. I think that's spectacular. I think forcing them to set back five feet defeats what we're trying to accomplish by minimizing the concrete.
So a little bit of pushback on that, though. If we do say that it can't extend more than 15-feet from the face of the garage, putting them back gives them more room then to have a tapered, narrower driveway. So you might get some little bit of gain.
But they can do that, notwithstanding the requirement or not?
Yes. But that point happens.
Yeah, if they're building, they can set it back if they want more space.
That's a decision they'd have to make.
And that's a design, yes. That's a design decision that they make, and they're making it of their own volition and their own architectural creativity.
And hopefully, that 15-foot requirement helps them make that decision to set it back a little further rather than have it stick forward.
I would leave it alone, but I do have a question. Now, we're talking about the front of the house. What constitutes the front of the house? Because I'm looking at this one here on Northgate, and the front door is set back, but then you've got the right side of the house bumped out, almost equivalent to the garage. Is that the front of the house then?
I do take the whole width of it. So this is considered part of the front of the house. And their setback is to, you know, to whichever is, it would be to this bay area versus the recessed front door.
Okay.
It would be taken from that point, not the front door, so...
And the same for 519 Sullivan, the first one, because that garage also gets further. How do you measure all the way to the firing of the street?
Yeah.
No, maybe it's, yeah. In the little picture, it looks further than it was sticking out.
There's a, definitely a porch on the front of it.
So it might only be sticking five feet in front of the porch.
But the whole house, you're still measuring the whole space?
I would just say that I, from what I've read here, what the historic preservation agencies concerned with, perhaps the village board and the preservation commission's concern was also a little bit the streetscape appearance of Riverside. And going on the assumption that that's accurate, that it wasn't just the amount of concrete, but it was also, as you drive down or walk down the street, what the houses look like. And that a garage is the central element of the houses that changes the focus from looking at the architectures of the house and the differences in the houses to fairly similar double garage doors, which are always going to be double garage doors. I mean, there can be stuff around it, but... So it makes the appearance of the village more monotonous in that way. So I would still favor pushing the garages back so they're less visible.
I favor pushing them back precisely for that reason, so that you see the house, the front door, the porch, or stew, if there is one. And perhaps gives them, if they don't have an open front porch, unclosed front porch, gives them an easier way to add one on later on. And I don't want to see garages as we've been walking around. The ones that have the recessed garages simply weren't as visible.
Is there a split on this one?
You're in favor of setback?
Yeah.
Adrian's in favor of no change?
No change.
Setback?
No change.
Setback?
Still setback.
Setback, okay.
I believe that, oh, general discussion of other ways to incentivize moving attached garages away from the front? Any ideas or thoughts that are on page three? Are different options that were presented to us?
My concern is, if I may jump in, my concern is that the potential abuse of any incentives or taking advantage of. But one that we potentially could entertain would be some kind of credit towards impervious area. But I don't know if that's a road I want to go down. I can't decide. But impervious area seems to be the one thing that we heard last month that sometimes pushes designers towards driveways in front because they don't want to pay for a backyard garage with impervious area, which is essentially what we're requiring them to do at the moment.
I share your concern about incentivizing the wrong thing, which is why I think the last meeting I said I would not want to give impervious credit for putting a detached garage in the back because I think that's simply increasing the impervious surface even more. But I do think some of the other villages here give incentives for having a side-loaders or rear-loaders attached garage. Or in my mind, also a tandem garage, or even some of these garages that are like sub-level. Because visually, again, if it's a whole garage, it doesn't have the same visual impact. So I'd be in favor of some credit for that. I think the standard amount was like 250 square feet. And then I was also, if we wanted to talk about detached garage, I don't see a problem with allowing them to be closer than 10-feet. And perhaps giving 100% credit for the surface that's taken up by the breezeway. You know, like you can have attachment. We won't count that against your impervious surface, for example. Because if the garage is three or four feet away and the breezeway's open, it can't be enclosed. I think that's reasonable.
Commissioner Miller, at the last meeting, you mentioned that you'd be more in favor of providing, of disincentivizing builders to do certain things over incentivizing things. And I really liked that concept, although between last meeting and now, I've been hard-pressed to think about what that would be. So I really liked that concept, but I didn't actually have any clear ideas that would get us there. And I wasn't sure, based on what you just said, I'm not sure that you had ideas either, but it's your idea.
I don't particularly have any clear ideas for that either, but I almost want to say I disfavor front-loaded garage. That was my idea. And therefore, if you do this because it's cheaper to build or whatever, because of the ill effect on the streetscape, maybe, I don't know, I guess one way would be is to decrease your impervious surface allowance by some percentage or something like that. I don't know. You know, you must have more impervious surface. But that's the only way I'm going to think of it.
So do we want to require pavers for front-loading garage driveways?
Maybe we can do that. Yeah, that's an idea.
Yeah, I would be...
Increase the price.
Two of them said not that much.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that was, as a caveat to his statement that I don't think he made clear, it was less expensive for them to do a permeable paver driveway than it was for them to do a stamped and stained concrete driveway. So it was a decorative concrete driveway versus a permeable paver driveway. And also, to their point, I believe they also did have to address an impervious surface issue. So some portion of their driveway, just due to how far back it had to go to reach the garage, did need to be permeable. So ultimately, it just made sense to do all permeable pavers in that instance versus just permeable pavers, say, in the back, and then have the front be a stamped concrete to try and make it aesthetically match. and then have the front be a stamped concrete to try and make it aesthetically match rather than your typical Portland cement.
Is it an issue on why people are not going to garages in the back, whether side loading or detached, because of the impervious surface limitation?
That is part of it. Another, another, the biggest concern I heard about doing that was that there's this detachment from your backyard that you get from doing a side loaded or rear garage on the back of your house. Because then you have it at the back of your house, all the cars are coming around behind you. And so your backyard that you're using then is detached that much more from your house. You don't have that opportunity for that deck to come out of the back of your house to go enjoy your backyard, because your garage and your driveway is right there. So that seems to be more the pushback I've heard. I don't even want to consider that, because that's not, you know, that's not how I want to use my backyard, or it's, you know, from a builder's standpoint. I don't know, you can't sell that. People don't want to have their backyard cut off from them by.
Got it.
By ample driveway.
So, so giving, as, as Commissioner Marhol suggested, giving them some sort of extra bonus feat for extra impervious surface really wouldn't factor in?
I don't think it's as much of an issue for that. I think it's more of an incentive for a detached garage. That's, you know, the 10 feet, and no, everybody wants their garage further than 10 feet away, you know, from the house. Again, it provides you more of that usable area to be able to, to do, so.
Same, so if, if, if you have the house and then you just have the garage like off right next to it, right behind it, and still detached, don't you have a much bigger yard than if the driveway is going all the way back and then the building's back there? I mean, I think that could be personally more attractive. And then, and if with the breezeway, I mean, I think that would be a design that would.
Yeah, I mean, a breezeway is definitely a more practical solution if your garage is closer to your house.
Right.
Than further away from your house.
And then you can design something, if you're designing from a new, something that has a, you know, a connection, architectural connection, like the breezeway, almost like you have a little compound. And also, the one thing I, I did notice that I think our code does not allow for some reason, although I think some older houses in R1AA have, is their garages detached but to the side, in the side yard. And I think that looks fine.
There are some allowances for it. I think they, there's some allowance for a detached garage to be either in a side yard or a front yard.
It says only if you can't put it in the rear.
If you don't have a rear yard to basically, basically don't have an adequate rear yard to be able to put it in and meet the separation requirement.
I think there's always one house I'm thinking of that probably could have put it in the rear yard and they, in the side yard. I just don't know if our code should prevent that, if you have the space, to put it in a side yard and be a detached garage in the side yard, because then that allows people to have a large backyard. So.
Again, I think the idea is that you don't want garages facing and being.
That's true.
Close to the front.
We could always, it's hard to be pushed back too.
So, yeah. So I think they typically want them at least behind that, that rear plane of the house.
But again, if we're going to be allowing the front loading garages, to me, it doesn't make sense to say, well, a detached garage can't follow the same rules as the front loading attached garage. Why can't that also fix the street if we're allowing?
Right. But I think for the most part, you're probably not going to find a lot of areas where that's going to work.
Not a lot. But I'm just saying, I don't know if we should bar it, if it's a reasonable choice.
Other thoughts on incentives, disincentives?
I would be against disincentivizing the builders or the home buyers or the home builders for putting out a front loading garage.
Could you say that again, please, Adrian?
I would be disinclined to give any kind of disincentive. I don't think we should penalize them for deciding to do a front loading garage.
What about, I mean, I propose the option being, do we want to give some sort of building coverage bonus? So you get a little bit more house if you choose to do a detached garage, you know? Say we do our four, you know, 400 is kind of our cutoff. If you do 400 square feet or more garage, detached garage, you have to do a grading plan. 400 square foot addition or more, you have to do a grading plan. So 400 square feet is kind of like this number that we already use in our code. Different communities have different numbers that they use. Some of them were on the smaller sides. It was like 250 square feet of floor area ratio bonus or building coverage bonus that they give. Is that something that we would be consider, consider doing? We'll give you a little bit of incentive for a detached garage or a rear loaded or side loaded garage from building coverage perspective, but we're still going to restrict our impervious surface. So maybe you get a little bit more house if you choose one of these options, you know, that gives you that little bit more flexibility to, to do that. But we're still going to hold you to either the 50 or 45% impervious surface. Like nobody's giving any sort of bonuses for impervious surface. I mean, their, their bonuses all seem to be very floor area ratio focused. That's not something that we regulate, but.
Right.
A similar sort of bonus could be a building coverage bonus.
I'm still confused as to how that would work, because we don't have an overall building coverage restriction.
Yes, we do. 30%.
We do.
Across the board. R1A to R4, R1A to R4. Everybody is restricted to 30%, except for corner lots, I believe, in the R4.
Okay, thank you for that.
So 30% building coverage is our restriction kind of universally. So to give that little bit of flexibility to make that decision to go with a detached garage or to go with a rear loaded or side loaded garage, you get a little bit more house for choosing to put things in the back, but you're still hemmed in by light of that 45 or 50% impervious restriction. So just.
As well as the side yard setback, sorry. So any additional house you're building on would be in the back, where people wouldn't be seeing it, probably.
Well, it depends on which house. Actually, I, I can.
Commissioner Scannell, can you say something?
Well, I just, I realized, so I was probably cutting that off. I just wanted to confirm, are you proposing this just for new construction or for people who are building, rebuilding their garage? Because I currently have a detached garage, so could I then build extra on my house? I'm not planning to touch my garage, but I'm putting it a, you know, proposal to do some remodeling. So would that, that apply to me, that I could now add extra, you know, extra square footage to my house, even though I had no intention of ever moving my garage to the front? So would this apply?
No, I think this would only apply to new construction.
Or if you were going to, or if you're rebuilding your garage?
New garage construction.
New garage.
New garage construction. Okay. Right, thanks for that clarification.
I was thinking more specifically to new house construction, not even necessarily to new garage construction.
You'd have to figure out how much value there is to giving them that incentive, because I think it's a big ask these days to do a detached garage, just from the comfort feature, the ease feature of it attached.
For existing homes, you don't really have a lot of options, though.
Right, but I'm talking about the new builder.
For new construction.
New construction. To ask them to pull that garage away and put it detached, you're going to have to give them something that make, really makes it worth their while, because that's, that's going to affect the attractiveness of the house to a buyer. So I, I don't know how you come up with that value.
Right.
You know, they may tell you, oh, an extra 200 feet, that's not worth it to me. I'm not going to do that. But where's the breaking point? And I don't know where that is.
Right. So maybe if you basically make a detached, a two car detached garage a freebie in your building coverage, does that?
Yeah.
You know, does, does that, so that gives you more flexibility on the house? Does that help, you know?
Actually, I would say I would lean in that direction, because we do, I apologize to our viewing public for, we don't want to add additional impervious. So maintaining those restrictions, those rules as is, but giving the extra area of a detached garage as a freebie, because part of the issue is when you have, if I may continue to explain, one of the encouragements in design of having an attached garage that is part of the house eliminates the area that would be otherwise occupied. You get to have more coverage. But if you give that detached garage in the rear as a freebie, it does give that extra house area that you were speaking to. The value of it, Commissioner, does it, I, a lot of this is I, the beholder. And clearly, people are buying existing houses with detached garages and that's, we don't, I don't think those were selling any worse or better than attached garages. There's a preference, but it all comes down to personal desire.
But how many new ones are being built with detached garages?
Um.
It's the vast majority. There's no question about that.
Yeah, so I mean, there's a demand for.
One.
Did you say D or attached?
Detached.
Detached. There's not many being built.
I had, I had one.
Yeah, there's no demand. So if you're going to make that, you know, attractive to them, you're going to have to give them something worthwhile.
I don't think it's one to one. I mean, I think the other villages are something I'm between 215 and 400 square feet, so they don't allow for an entire two car to have attached, detached garage. But I agree.
But in average.
With what you're saying, I mean, there's a, as long as you're within the same impervious surface requirement, it seems to be.
I could see just giving them the, the area of the garage. We're assuming that the area of a typical detached garage is 400 square feet.
Well, 20 by 20. So you can certainly do smaller.
Sure.
You know.
Or you can make.
And accommodate two cars in there. It'll be a tight fit, but, you know, 18 foot wide.
Right.
18 by 18, you could do. Just maybe not if you have an Explorer, you know, a larger vehicle.
I looked at a few, you know, floor plans just online of new houses and a lot of those garages were 20 by 20.
Yeah.
For, I mean, that's the standard setting. I, I wanted to say one thing, though, because I know at the village board meeting, some of the commissioner, some of the trustees were commenting about sustainability and issues like that. And I just wanted to say that I would have to guess unless a newly built detached garage is heated and cooled, that it is more sustainable to have a detached garage, because when you're opening and closing those garage doors, the air in your house and the heated and cooled air that's in that attached garage is not going in and out. So I think there is an environmental benefit to having detached garages as well.
It's an incentive.
Obviously, the greenest way to do it, though, is just to work with the building stock that you have and not tear down building. That being said, sometimes you're going to have to tear something down. Sometimes you just want to be able to tear something down and, and build something new. So, you know, there's, there's going to be times when there's a vacant lot and to build on it is going to require new construction, obviously. So, but to work with existing stock and be able, you know, and I think our, our code does a good job of incentivizing being able to use existing houses. You know, we allow for those vertical extensions of non-conforming walls, so we don't make it so that you can't do anything with an existing house. You know, so I mean, I think we do have things that allow people to be able to, to work with existing housing stock.
And by disincentivizing, because you have to go to the preservation commission.
That's true. You do have to go to the preservation commission to give them the opportunity to see if this is how, a house that is worthy of landmark designation and have that, have that opportunity, if it's a tear down for a house, to, to take it through that process if they, if they choose to. They have obviously not afforded themselves that opportunity. Nothing that's been proposed to be torn down has been of a high enough architectural quality for, for them to say it, it should be landmarked and given the opportunity to go through that process. But it's there. So it is, it is a step that somebody has to take in order to tear down a house.
So do you think we've covered everything that you were looking for?
I think so.
Early, so you guys can draft something and.
What was the decision on that incentive?
I think we're in favor. Am I misspeaking?
400 square feet?
The size of the garage itself, or?
Or just 400 square feet?
I'd like to suggest the size of the garage. I think the vast majority of people will go for the full 400.
Not sure how you incentivize attachments, but let us know. Was there a decision on the closeness of the detached garage, the 10 foot distance?
No, do we want, do we want to change our separation requirements to allow them to be closer than 10 feet? Do we want to go to five feet? Do we just want to follow the building code and, and say, you know, if it's, it's three feet, if you want to be less than three feet, then you have to do the 3/8 or 1/2 gypsum board?
I'd leave it up to the building code.
Just go to the building code?
No. Yes.
Yeah, we haven't done any variation on that, so.
What's that?
Although it might not have come to that, we haven't had any variations. I don't know how many people have asked you about that in terms of new building, to have it closer.
No, I mean, I've had a few where there's been an existing garage that was in poor condition that got torn down. And so the new one had to be pushed back a few feet to meet that 10 foot requirement. So.
And we're leaving the 50%.
50% of the width, everybody was okay?
Yes.
There had been some talk about, Commissioner Miller had suggested shrinking that up the base, or giving him 20 feet, not to exceed 20 feet.
Maybe not to exceed, maybe not to exceed 19 feet, if that's practical? I don't know if that is practical. And again, it depends on where you're measuring it. If you measure it from garage interior, no one can really see. Or you're measuring it from the door?
Right, we measure it from exterior, because it's the facade as a whole, so.
One of them is 22 feet, those are far.
Right.
And I think Wheaton had one as well.
I mean, maybe there's something you can do if your doors are, what, nine feet wide?
And there's a space in between them. You know, usually there's a foot separation between the two for sub wall or.
I would leave it alone.
On something that's not really directly attaching, I just think that there's no requirement in our code as to the incline rate, whatever that's called, the driveways. I don't know if there should be, that it can only go up, you know, a certain grade level. Is that in the building code?
Um, that might be a public works decision. I think in a lot of communities, that's more of a, an engineering thing. They, they get into the slope of a driveway and slopes of approaches. And so that's something I can certainly approach with our engineer and see. I know.
Because if you have a front loading attached garage and it's like raised up, it's more, you see that concrete more. It's more visually there, you know, you don't have that steady and flat surface and the green space.
Right. And I think the top of a garage foundation is supposed to be lower than the top of foundation for, the garage floor is supposed to be lower than the garage per building code than the floor level of the house itself. So it will always be usually like, you know, a little bit, a few inches lower. So that's why you always kind of have that step down of a house into a detached garage. So that's a building code.
That's your fire code, I believe.
Partially fire code, partially building code. I think it all kind of comes together. They require that, that separation.
Okay, then we have new business discussion and direction to staff on possible changes to zoning code related to stoops, porches, awnings, and impervious surfaces.
Yes. So as I said earlier, the village board in their discussion about the gauge variation took a slightly different route than the commission took. But again, I think it was kind of similar struggles. Is this a stoop? Is this a porch? Since it was only three feet, you know, essentially three, three and a half feet deep from the front of the house. So they asked that we look into making clarifications or possibly even changing the code to make it so it would allow something like what 173 gauge was proposing. So they're looking to have some clarification or more definition around a stoop. So they're looking to have some clarification or more definition around a stoop, any sort of limitations we wanna put on it. And then also, as I said, they want us to look into the impervious surface restrictions and being able to afford the opportunity for other people to exceed their 50% or 45% impervious surface restrictions to, if they do a net, you know, loss of impervious, so they're getting closer even though they haven't hit that, that mark, to be able to, to do that if it is actually gonna bring the overall impervious on their lot down without having to come to us for a variation. Obviously, if somebody wants to remove impervious surface on their lot, they can do that without variation. It's that, it's that new construction in a new area that kind of clicks in the need for a variance. You know, staff does not necessarily feel comfortable saying, "Okay, it's okay if you take out 100 square feet here and then add it on over here, 'cause, 'cause nothing's changed." It's one thing if you're working within an already impervious area and, you know, so if they had just wanted to create a stoop off the side where the stairs were, that was already an impervious area, that's probably something that staff would have allowed without having to go through the variance process because it wasn't putting impervious surface in a, in a new area. When you start putting impervious surface in a new area, even if you're taking something else out, that was not necessar, that was a broader stroke of my administrative abilities than I was necessarily comfortable with just being able to say would be okay. So this would be formally writing into the code that so long as you're bringing down the, the total impervious surface lower than it was before, you know, pre-project, that that would be okay for somebody to do without having to come before this body and the village board and have it, you know, adapted for them to be able to do that. So...
My thought about this is I wasn't sure how many properties or if it's even a concern about the properties in town that are significantly over the current limit because they're grandfathered in. And that even just, you know, a small reduction isn't quite good enough. So I'm not sure if there are properties like that in town or if it's even worth worrying about. But I'm worried about having just the blanket statement of as long as you're coming down, you know, somewhere else you could put a new sidewalk in or a new, you know, patio pad or whatever in, just as long as you're coming down a certain amount. But if you're already way over the limit, should that require review? But I don't know what, you know, what numbers to put around that or if there are even properties like that that we should be concerned about.
And there are some. You know, there are, you know, there are properties that have 65, 69% of their, their lots covered. In some cases, it might be because they're a substandard lot. You have some that are, like I say, on Burlington, that are only like 5,000 square foot lots. You know, they're, they're 50 feet wide, 100 feet deep. They've got a detached garage, house, the driveway, and they are, you know, 65, 65, 69% of their lot being covered by impervious surface. And they are definitely, you know, tied in what they're, they're able to do. In those instances, I've said permeable pavers. You've got those towards your impervious surface. If you wanna do a patio, it's gonna have to be permeable pavers. There's not a lot I can, you know, a lot I can do for you without you going through the variance process, so.
Do any of the other commissioners have a concern about that? About, you know, as long as you come down, you're okay, you don't have to go through a variation? Are there any circumstances where we wouldn't want that applied?
I can't think of one myself.
And any reduction is a reduction, I suppose.
I'd like, if we're gonna go down this road, I'd like to see more than just a minimal, you know, 1%. That's kinda where I struggle with this.
Mm-hmm, I could see that.
And maybe that helps get to some of my concern. Like as long as you're coming down a certain percentage, even if you were way over before, at least you're making a dent in, in the total surface that you have.
Right, I mean, I look at the gauge situation and there's one where you shouldn't have two driveways to begin with, so. You should be getting rid of that second driveway anyways, because you're not supposed to have two curb cuts on a property. You're not supposed to have two driveways on a single-family property. It's not allowed by code.
It wouldn't even be legal non-conforming in that instance?
So...
Not if the driveway doesn't go anywhere.
To a garage.
So there is a second garage in the back, but that driveway didn't go all the way back to it.
So at some point, that side patio or whatever was put in and the village didn't require them to take that garage, that driveway still out?
Apparently. So, you know, in some cases, you know, you would wanna make that a requirement, you know. You have this superfluous thing here that's technically doesn't meet code anyways. That should go in order for you to be able to do, you know, anything else. So, you know, kinda what kind of parameters do we wanna put in there?
One question that's asked at the board meeting was that if somebody's doing work and in the process of that work, they're having a net reduction in impervious, should they be required to come to compliance, should they come down to 50%? I think that's asking too much in some instances, yeah. There wasn't much back and forth on that. I think that was discouraged in property improvements and all kinds of things.
I mean, you always want people to bring it down. I certainly don't want you to increase your impervious surface beyond 50% with any sort of new construction. You wanna do an addition and it's gonna bring it over, you gotta bring it down somewhere else. Whether that be by switching your driveway out to permeable pavers or actually physically removing some structure. I had one house where they chose to remove a deck and sort of like patio pad they had behind the garage in order to be able to do the addition that they wanted to onto their house and stay within that, you know, 50% impervious. So, you know, sometimes there's ways you can figure out how to do it. You know, they couldn't continue to keep those things and have their addition. So something had to give and they said, "Okay, well, I don't really need a deck and a patio off the back of my garage. I'll get rid of that so that I can, you know, have the size addition that I want on the back of my house for my new kitchen and bedroom."
But we weren't requiring that by, by forcing them to go to, back towards the, our required impervious. They're just trying to not create more impervious, correct?
Right, like they could not do the addition without removing something else.
But that's, that's not the same thing as saying, "I have to bring an out-of-compliance property towards 50%." Because what if I'm at 60, 65% and that is my house and my garage and the driveway to get back to that garage? And now you're telling me I have to bring everything down to 50%? That seems like a pretty long, hard road to put someone on.
And if you're doing an improvement, if you're doing an improvement, I'm gonna make, you know, a building addition. Somehow that's gotta give or you're going before this board, you know, this commission for variance.
Right.
So...
That's only if you're increasing the...
If you wanna do something that's going to.
Okay, we're not just talking about...
But I'm saying, we're not, there's a difference between increasing and forcing you in front of us versus requiring you to reduce from where you're already at. I think those are two different things.
Do I hear any support for any provision that they come to 50%?
Nope.
Great. Another consensus.
I roll. And then, you know, like I said, I'm gonna be looking at what's, different communities have in restrictions on stoops, definitions for stoops. We already have the information, you know, a lot of communities on what they require for porches since we just, you know, went through that particular exercise. You know, we saw with the different definitions, if any. I mean, a lot of communities actually define a porch. I seem to remember that one was one where we kinda had to do that one on the fly. But, you know, so we have that kind of information already. We can look at stoops and then the other we can look at is maybe awnings versus roofs or, you know, look at the building code, look at zoning codes and kinda see how they define those items and, and see how we want to approach that. I think we've had some discussion about awning versus canopy, how it's defined in our sign ordinance versus how it's defined in our zoning code. So we can kind of lump that into the discussion and check that box as well as outstanding things we were gonna look at and kind of, you know, put that into this discussion as well.
I had a, a proposed solution for this, which is not basic. My proposed solution would be to allow every house one main entryway, which will not be considered encroaching as long as the landing is so big, which maybe would be like 5 by 7, 40 square feet, maybe something like that, with a single set of steps leading up to that landing that are no wider than some number, maybe 5 feet, 5 and 1/2 feet. They have a standard depth and rise or height according to the building code. And it doesn't matter what that thing is covered with. If it's an awning, canopy, supports, anything, but every house should be allowed to have that main entryway. And you can put it on the front of your house, you can put it on the side of your house. If you're putting it onto an unenclosed porch, you can't have that landing. You could only have the steps going up to it. And again, the steps would depend on how tall your house is. Like 173 gauge is much taller than other houses. And you just allow that. But the only concern I had is if we would, just like with the unenclosed porch regulation, they were concerned about the remaining street yard setback. There may be some need for concern, like you can't do that if you'd have like a 5-foot setback or 10-foot setback. And so get away from that whole idea of, you know, what's an awning, what's a canopy, what's a porch, what's a stoop? And then to allow elsewhere on the property to have a stoop and steps, a true stoop and steps and other ingress, egress doors and for that. And that's why I provided all those pictures of the front porches. I mean, a lot of them are kind of stoop-like front entry porches. A lot of them are fairly modest and that's the kind of thing, I would think, roughly the size and the size of 173 gauge that seems reasonable. And if you provide for overall square footage for the landing, people can design it the way they want, 3 feet by 13 feet or 4 by 5 or 5 by 7 or whatever makes sense for their particular front door and facade.
So rather than restricting a certain width, we go with more of an area?
Exactly, right. Within an overall, I said maybe 35 square feet or 40 square feet, seems like a, not a tiny landing, decent-sized landing. But if you want something much grander, then you would have to come in.
I think the code minimum is 36 square feet. That's the building code minimum. So that's that 3 by 3 pad that you're required to, to provide.
For, for a stoop?
For a landing at an entry, exit, exterior entry.
Right, so I want, I would recommend something, something that's appropriate to a reasonable front entrance. And if you want something really grand, then, then maybe you do have to come in for variance.
So for the variance that came before us last month, that has been approved to like move forward, even if we didn't ultimately confer that that met what we're gonna come up with for the definition of stoop, because it was so wide, right? That's already been approved to be built as, as was presented, right?
Well, it's, it's before the board for them to make a formal decision. But the consensus was that everybody was in favor.
Oh, right, the decision writing it for tomorrow.
So, yeah, so it's on the agenda tomorrow. We've written the ordinance and, you know, added the board's findings that differed from, from your findings for, for the uniqueness and impact on character, so. So that'll be before them, but yeah, given the side, there was no additional restrictions that they added on to or anything was basically as proposed with the requirement that that second driveway and the associated apron needed to be removed. So they felt that the width was, was reasonable, given that it was, you know, going between the two existing pillars there, that it was centered between there, that there was sort of an architectural reasoning for it. And then similarly, with it being an existing enclosed front porch, with it being a duplex and kind of how the interiors made it out that structurally, architecturally made it different, difficult to try to do something else in that area, in that area to accommodate that entrance. Or to try to work within that existing kind of setback with it, so. Mr. Randall and Mr. Manning were there at the meeting to answer questions and kinda talk through what their reasoning and the different things they had thought of and tried to work through in trying to figure out how to create that, that front entry.
Right, and that was a struggle because aesthetically, what they designed looked beautiful, but, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't a stoop, you know?
Right. So...
So Jeff, under your proposal, the one's on page 2.
No, so that's just a different type of porch. That's one of those inset structures. So the stairs would be a, I mean, the one on top would be what you'd call an unenclosed front porch. So you could normally add steps going up to that. You can't have a landing too. And the same for the bottom one, I think. Those are unenclosed front porches.
Oh, because to the left of that awning is the porch area?
It's my porch.
Yeah, right.
Right. I just wanted to make sure, just to be the front porch.
No, I agree with that. But I, I provided a variety of models.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so that's, yeah. But so it wouldn't matter if you call it a porch or whatever. I mean, if you wanna go further in dimensions, then maybe you have to request a variance. But if you don't, it shouldn't be something that they have to come in for variance if they buy a house or whatever and they don't have a front entrance, they don't have a front entrance. I think it's reasonable and it's good for the village to allow that and not get frustrated by other definitions. I particularly like what the, what was proposed for 173 gauge is a roof extension, not really an awning, not a canopy. It's just, I'm just proposing this as a way to get away from all those definitions. And then I did look at the definitions for awning and canopy. One of the things I thought a bit odd about them is that they only, they only apply, I think, to covering doors or windows. And I would think a lot of canopies cover areas much broader than door or window. They cover like platforms and decks and things like that. So I don't know if that should be changed. I do think if we went your way and said what was allowed for the landing, we still need to say what else is allowed or isn't allowed. And a lot of the discussions, you know, with the nature and size of whatever upper extension is, roof, awning, canopy, is it attached, is it extension of the roof? The size of the landing, one board member said he didn't want to deal, he or she didn't wanna deal with numbers. I think we're gonna have to. And then if there are posts from the, whatever that thing is down to the landing, does that make it a porch or not a stoop? And so we already have to consider the features, I think. Well, I'm not, I don't know, I mean, I don't know if you, I mean, you could build something that's like a porch or you could build something that's not a porch. I mean, if it's a porch, it's an unenclosed porch. I mean, like, like what would you call, like one of the rear ones? I mean, it's a platform with pillars with a covering, it's like this one. Quite a target. Yeah, is that, I guess that's a porch, but it looks a lot like a...
That's a stoop.
It's smaller than a stoop.
That's a stoop.
But it has pillars and it has a covering, so I would see that it may...
I, I don't think that the defining characteristic of whether it's a porch or a stoop is whether it has pillars or not. I think it's really a functionality thing.
Well, that's what we hoped to clear up.
Yeah.
Right. So, I mean, interestingly enough, like I know a lot of, a lot of communities where there's new construction and new subdivisions, you know, porches became a big thing. And they, a lot of builders were putting these sort of fake porches on the front of their houses and they were like 3 feet deep, you know? And that was their porch that they were advertising and you couldn't, it's barely functional, functional, but it was that 3-foot landing that they needed. But then they were able to, you know, extend it out the whole width of the thing to try to make it slightly more architecturally pleasing in that they had, you know, this kind of thing there, but 3 feet is not really a functional porch. So some communities started saying, you know... So some communities started saying, you know, front porches are only allowed to encroach into a street yard if they are, you know, at least five feet deep. And then in no case can they encroach more than a certain amount. But there started to be this like five foot number, like, you know, it's not really a porch unless it's five feet, or if you want to make a porch, it has to be at least five feet deep to try to make it more of a functional space as opposed to something that just is for show and not for function. So, I mean, that's, I suppose, something to think about as well, as we kind of throw out numbers, is this five foot number minimum depth for a porch is something that's a lot of communities over the past, you know, 15 years, with a lot of the big construction boom, new subdivisions, you know, a lot of communities threw around as a requirement. So just something to think about. And obviously that's not a width thing, it's a depth, it's five feet deep.
Any more input, the trustee colleague? Trustee Collette, would you like to come to the board?
Thank you. This needs a clarification, going back to your conversation with the curbing and that which you said, I believe, or what I heard you say was that you did not want to require a non-conforming lot to come back to the 50%.
That seemed to be the consensus.
So you want to change the code, because that's what the code requires now, that if you, if you're at 60% and you want to add on, you've got to bring it back to the 50%. That's the current code requirement, right? So what you're saying is you want to amend the code to allow what you allowed by that variation, or something similar to that. Is that correct?
No, it remained non-conforming, but moving in the right direction.
Right now, if you, if you're at 60%, and you want to, you want to, and you say, I'm willing to remove 5% over here, if you'll let me build 5% over here, you can't do that.
Currently, no.
You'd have to remove 15% to add 5%.
Yes.
In other words, go from 60 to 45, then add 5, and you're at 50.
Currently, yes.
Currently. And what you said was you want to keep it that way. As you said, the current, you don't, or no, I'm sorry, you said you don't want to keep it that way, because you said the current provision, you don't want that, right? So I, you can tell I'm confused. So I want to be clear what your direction is.
I personally would want them to come to 50%, but the majority of commissioners didn't want to go that route. They wanted to encourage people to come, do things legally, get their permits, do a variation, and then reduce as much as they can.
Well, and seeing that, that's why this is back to you, is because I think I was probably the most vocal about this on the board. I don't think that's a variable standard, or it's a difficult standard to vary. In a particular case that was before you, I couldn't figure out why we would let that resident do it and continue to tell all the other residents that they can't do it. What was it about that, the impervious coverage on that lot that was unique to that property that justified that trade-off that we, we all thought, I think, was appropriate?
But I didn't think, again, that's my email to you, I didn't, I was confused by what you said. I didn't think you wanted to require them to come into 50%.
I'm not sure what I want. I want inputs from you. I'm not sure what's right, I mean, that's a policy decision. That was my whole point. This is a policy decision, not a variation.
Right.
Because we need to have a policy that's consistent for all residents of the village. And to say, well, you can always just ask for a variation, we've got to change that mindset. It's not either comply or ask for a variation, it's just comply. If you have something unique about your property, then maybe you can ask for a variation. And in this case, I just didn't see anything other than, the only, only thing I heard in the write-up for the plank issue was, well, because of the net reduction, that's why we support the variation. Well, then everyone should get that benefit, right? You know, why?
I don't think that was just on basis of the recommendation.
Okay, well, then I missed that.
Yeah, I don't think that was a sole basis at all.
What was the other reason for that particular variation?
For the impervious request, portion of the variation request, because there was several portions, you know.
Okay, I thought you were just saying for the.
No, no, I just meant the impervious coverage variation.
Part of it also was that it was a duplex and it had this partial driveway that was no longer being used and not all, every house has that, so it was part of doing their hoped work that they could take that out. But that was a part of why I was in favor of having, I thought it was a reasonable alternative for them to have a side entrance to their house that would eliminate the existing impervious driveway surface. I thought that was a reasonable solution for that particular situation, where they wouldn't be building new impervious surface, they'd be building over existing impervious surface and eliminating some of that. But I also didn't understand, how does it vary than what happened with the St. Mary's situation, where they were allowed?
Well, but to trustee colleague's point, when somebody is wanting to do something to their house, quite often there's a required variation with it about impervious surface. And you're trying to eliminate it because then we see it so often that maybe we need a text amendment.
We haven't really seen it that often.
Sorry?
We haven't really had a lot, we've had two impervious surface variations.
Yes, okay, I retract that.
I just see that you're going to see, any variation you're going to see in that regard is going to have just as much justification as the gauge variation had relative to the impervious surface. I'm not talking about the setback or the other variation. You know, they're removing non-conforming structures. We either need to, you know, we need a policy that's village-wide, I think, that says that if you're, either you have to come into compliance or you don't. Of course, the other aspect of this is not, you know, hate to introduce new things in 915, but it's also a financial issue, because money is the only thing that's keeping this guy from complying. And he admitted that at the board meeting, that, yeah, it's, we don't want to spend money to make the driveway permeable. Well, I get that, I don't blame him, and I probably wouldn't either. But again, that gets to, it's a policy issue, not a variation, because everybody doesn't want to spend that extra money in that situation, almost everybody.
Well, and in that situation, only a portion of it really could have been made permeable, because a large portion of that driveway is on the neighboring property that serves the two. So it's kind of where they diverge, is where they can be able to replace part of that driveway with permeable pavers. Is that enough to get them below, to the 50%? I'm not sure if that was or not. But they also have that second garage, so they have a second garage that's not served by any driveway, is just used as storage, I'm assuming, at this point, or maybe a studio, I don't know. So they have two garages on the property. You know, they could have taken down a garage to bring down the overall impervious surface as well, if they, if they wanted to. But, you know, that didn't necessarily serve their purpose. Obviously, that garage has some sort of value to them that they didn't want to take that down. But the driveway was not something that's providing any sort of value for them, so that's, that was an easier one for them to be able to get rid of, to provide a benefit, an offset, et cetera, for what they were adding.
So I guess I'm not trying to direct in any way, I'm just suggesting that the board is asking for direction from you. Keep it the same, which means that if you're non-conforming, but can't add on or move it around without bringing it into conformance, that's doing nothing.
That's the status quo, yes.
That's the status quo. Or amending the code to say that if you have a net reduction of X percent, you could move stuff around and still be non-conforming. So if, exactly what we did in this case, that X percent is up to you to recommend and the board to decide, could be 5%, 10%, 30%, whatever, I don't know. But that just, this just strikes me as something that should be village-wide, a policy that every resident has to follow and that we're consistent, rather than saying, you know.
Yeah, I sort of disagree. I mean, I think what we're trying to do is encourage people to make improvements to their property. And the reason for the variance is, you know, sort of the criteria we go through, did they create the situation? Is the, you know, what, why are we granting this? And it's not just an impervious surface variance, that's part of a larger variance request. And it's hard to think through all that, what those larger variance requests could be and should be, and separate that from the impervious surface variation. I think the impervious surface variation is always a tag along, and if we were going to say, you need, you know, one route, we require everybody to come down to 50%, or if you're not going to come down to 50%, you need to come in and explain, you know, you're hitting those criteria, why you need variance. And the zoning commission can recommend yea or nay, and it goes up to the trustees. But I think the universe is too wide on what are these other things that are happening in addition to the impervious surface variance for us just to blatantly say, well, we're not going to have this come before the board.
So you're suggesting that the evaluation of this particular impervious surface variation was somehow married to or tied to the evaluation of the other variation?
I think in both instances it was, absolutely.
Yeah, I think there's something to that. So this wasn't like, you know, there's one variation for a garage and one for the front porch. It was three variations that all related to this one thing that they were trying to do. And so to the extent, I know they ended up voting on impervious surface separately, but I think if the original request was you take these three as a package so that we can do what we're doing, and so you're looking at the factors of, you know, the fact that we have two and they're non-code compliant, and it was a two duplex and now it's a single family, that all relates into the impervious surface as part of it, because you're doing this one thing as a result of all that. And the impervious surface is a byproduct of that one thing.
So in theory, if the front stoop slash porch conformed, your recommendation on the impervious surface coverage may have been different?
So the only reason they'd be coming in front of us was impervious surface?
And they're still making that reduction?
Right. It's a tough one.
It is a tough one, and it was somewhat of a package deal, even though we voted on them separately, because the alternative was, if they couldn't get that front stoop and had to go with the side entrance, there would have been no reduction in the impervious surface, because they weren't going to take out that driveway then.
Yeah, because they could have inset the entry under the roof line, but it gets back to the question of cost.
That would have been very expensive, but I think they could have put a side entrance just off the side.
But if they had to do that, they weren't going to take out that driveway.
But they would have, oh, I bet they would have redesigned it, they wouldn't have wanted a full driveway there. They would have had a different, and they would have taken out the steps on the other side.
Not according to the architect.
Yeah, well, I can't believe they would have had asphalt, asphalt side road. And they would have taken.
But that's why it was a package deal, because we, there was a net gain there on that service issue.
But it depends, we didn't actually examine the rest of the property. We didn't question, is there somewhere else on this property?
Traitor, trio, or something else.
Trustee colleague's point, right. And I mean, and there was a fair bit, you know, there's, there was, there's a fair bit of paving on that property. There's large paver patio area, walkway on the side, like I said, there's two garages, garages on there, large deck area, you know, kind of gazebo thing in the backyard, so. But again, all those are things that predate this particular property owner, that's a condition they inherited, and to correct all that would be a fair bit of, fair bit of investment to do. Hopefully, it's, you know, in the future, down the pike, you know, the longer they're there, there's the more they can take out and work towards getting towards the 50%.
So back to my original question then, so what you were saying originally was that the provision that you bring it into compliance, you, was it, you didn't want to change, or you did want to change?
Well, I thought the, the board brought up the fact that is, if we're okay, as you brought it up at the meeting, if we're okay with this variance, because we're getting a net, you know, we're getting a net positive here, why don't we extend that courtesy to everybody? Which would require us rewriting the code, because right now, the way I read it, requires compliance.
I want to confirm, I wasn't clear.
Yeah, so that's, that's how staff interprets it.
Yes or no?
That's what staff does, that's what our code says, so we require compliance. If you want to put a patio over here, that means something's got to go away over there. You want to put an addition here, that means something else has to go away here, because I'm not going to approve new construction that doesn't meet the code, without it coming before you and the village board through the variance process. That's, that's how it works. So if we want to change it, so that, you know, we make some allowances for non-conforming, existing non-conforming situations, how do we want to do that? And, you know, as Joel said, like, is there a specific number we want to get into? If it only goes from 62 to 61%, are we okay with that? You know, what is that threshold that we want to achieve with allowing these incremental changes to happen, if that is indeed the way we want to go? Like I said, since I've been here, the St. Mary's and this gauge variation are the only two that we've had that have been impervious surface variation requests.
Which are two very unique properties.
So.
I mean, I think that's what it came down to my mind, is that, you know, this is not, you say, you know, take St. Mary's for example, you know, how many other, you know, two different zoning areas, you know, a structure that, area that's been around predates the code, and they wanted to do an improvement, you know, again, it was part of the package. I just, I agree, I just don't know how many instances we're going to have with sort of a run-of-the-mill property, where the right answer isn't, hey, you want to build an addition? You've got to clear out some of this stuff, that makes sense.
Right. I mean, we have, we have plenty of properties in town that don't meet the code, by a significant amount. I mean, there's plenty that are at 60%, 65%. You know, I think I had one that was at like 71%. In that instance, I can't remember if it was one of those like weird little like 50 by 100, you know, oddball lots. But, you know, we certainly have instances where people are significantly over and just because they have a ton of pavement on their property.
And a small lot usually.
Yeah. Not necessarily a small lot, but, you know, they have a patio and they've got their driveway and their driveway apron, you know, comes 30 feet from their driveway to their house and they've got their patio around it as well. You know, so low and behold, all of a sudden, they're at, you know, 65% or 59% or whatever the case may be, so they're, they're, they're over. If they were to bring their driveway into compliance and have it only come out 20 feet and they're tapered, would they maybe then meet the code? Maybe, maybe that's a simple fix right there. But, you know, there's, I mean, there is a fair number of properties in town that exceed their impervious surface restrictions.
But I think that's a great example of why the, why the variance, you know, if they wanted to come into 20 feet, but they were still going to be over 50%, you know, that'd be something to consider, is okay, they're, they're, they're going into substantial compliance, it's, you know, they have to go.
But they still have a patio and they still have.
Oh, no, no, but.
And, you know, there's, there's other things they could possibly do to get it, you know, I mean, I don't.
No, my example is they've done everything, but because of the driveway, the apron, they, they're, they're, they're still over, for whatever reason. I mean, in my mind, that's why we have this variance process, to show they can't trim down the driveway anymore, because then it becomes unusable.
Unless they put in a permeable paver. So maybe getting back to Joel's point, it's like maybe carve out something for non-building impervious surface. So if all you have are buildings and you're over your limit, there's not much you can do. But if you have, you know, flat impervious surfaces, like driveways, patios and things, maybe that has a higher, that, there's more. maybe that has a higher, that there's more demand for them to rethink their use of that.
But this is for new construction.
And that's, right, and that's what I, I mean, that's what I tell people to do, like, well, you're, you know, your other option here is to either remove pavement or switch to permeable pavers. Or if you, you know, you need a patio, the only kind of patio you're getting is a permeable paver patio. Because otherwise...
To get down to their required 50%.
Or just, I mean, I've allowed people to keep it at status quo. They're not adding to their impervious surface by adding a permeable paver patio. So, people have added patios even though they're over the 50% of their permeable paver patio. So, it's not counted towards their impervious surface.
But are, they're not 100% permeable, are they? Are they rated at 100%?
They're rated at 100%.
Okay.
So, what I heard you just say is that if somebody's doing an addition and they're saying 60%.
An addition.
Building improved something, they're adding to impervious. They need to find a way to get to 50. Or currently, they need to request a variation. You're asking for a text amendment so that nobody needs to go through that variation process?
I, I wouldn't phrase it that I'm asking for a text amendment. I'm suggesting that, that if you want to accommodate people doing that, then you need to do it by text amendment, not a variation. A variation is an extremely unfair way to allow people to do it because most people are going to come to Sonya and they're going to say, "Oh, the code makes me do this, I'm going to do it." And then they turn around and they see their neighbor, you know, went through the variation process and was allowed to do it, and it's like, that's where the integrity of your code starts to get compromised.
Well, they don't need a text amendment if they're able to reach 50%.
Right.
So, what kind of text amendment are you thinking of?
Again, if, if you want to accommodate this, it would be a text amendment that allows someone who's non-conforming to move the non-conforming structures around, just like you did on Gage. Essentially, exactly what you did on Gage, except allow everyone to do that by saying, if you have, if you're over your impervious coverage, let's say, for discussion sake, by 200 square feet, you're over. The code, the text amendment could say something like, "Well, you can, you can, you know, build new structures, move things around, as long as the net reduction gets you down to 100 square feet over." So, there's a net gain.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, so if we had a reduction of 50% of whatever you're over is...
Whatever number you felt comfortable with.
So, if you're currently non-conforming and you want to move things around, you don't need a variation for the impervious surface. That's what you're looking for.
If you're getting a net reduction...
So, long as you're giving a net reduction.
It's a somewhat significant step in the right direction.
I'm suggesting either that or be consistent and say, only when, and I accept the argument that this particular variation was unique. I don't happen to agree with that, but if you feel that's unique and you still want to continue to tell everyone else to comply, that's fine. I will go with that recommendation. I, I mean, I'll go with whatever recommendation you feel is appropriate for a variety of reasons, but I just think it needs to be addressed.
Right, so I think the correct way to think about that last point is what you brought up before. If the only variation they had needed was impervious surface, would you guys have considered it differently? Or would you have said, "Okay, we're giving it to you because you are..."
Good enough.
Maybe you don't want to answer that tonight. It's like, it's something to think about.
Something to think about.
And I wonder if I would have pushed more. Because I think we pushed on St. Mary's, and they came back and found a way to reduce it. And I don't know that we really pushed any further on the last request other than removing that existing driveway that they weren't using anyways.
Well, you also voted to deny that.
That's true. That's a really good pick.
You just recommended not...
Recommended.
So, the only thing I don't, I don't understand, maybe the, I'm not experienced enough in this, that N4B3, which talks about structural alterations to non-conforming, it says, "No structural alteration shall be performed on any non-conforming building or structure except when the alteration will not create any new non-conformity or increase the degree of an existing non-conformity." Why isn't something like this where there are reduced indications on the non-conformity okay? The non-conformity being impervious?
It's the structure, we have one that you just read, that's non-conforming.
Right, but what if you had a situation where they're not, they're doing something else and they're not dealing with a setback, non-conformity or some of that, which is what they were doing here, as well as the adding on to an enclosed front porch? What if it was in the backyard or something like that and they wanted to add some statues or something? If they were going to have a net reduction, I'm not, I'm just, I'm not clear on why that wouldn't be allowed automatically because they're not increasing impervious surface. Does that make sense? If you ask me?
I think, I think that's been, you know, just in talking through different situations that have come before me, that's just not the direction that I have gone under the advisement of council. You know, when it's been in the same situation, okay, I'm going to take out some patio here, but I need to put in, you know, I'm going to put in this new door back here. And so, it's all kind of happening in the same area. You know, I don't necessarily have a decrease, but I don't have an increase either. It's all happening in the same area. Somebody wants to be adding something new on a completely opposite side of the house that didn't have impervious before, but they'll say they'll take, I'll, you know, I'll, I'll trim off my patio over here so I can get a new walkway to my front door on this side of my house. Feels like a bit of a stretch, you know, for, for me to say that, yes, you know, we've not increased any non-conformity, but we have created a non-conforming new structure because it's more than the allowed impervious surface, and it's new, it's a new sidewalk.
Well, it's changed the non-conform, it's changed and reduced the non-conform, it's changed the location of the impervious surface.
I understand your reading, that's just not how it's been interpreted, so...
So, I mean, and again, looking at through the lens of the drainage and stormwater and flooding has been such a prominent issue in the village. I think it has been staff's understanding that we should always be searching for ways to decrease impervious surface, not make new impervious surface, you know, beyond what's allowed.
So, then maybe there should be like a ratio or something like that, you know, that's used, that's applied, as opposed to just always allowing it as long as there's any kind of reduction. You know, if you're building something that's, you know, 100 square feet, you've got to reduce the impervious surface by, I don't know, twice that or 150% of that or...
Mm-hmm. Well, Michael, I'll look at it and kind of see what we can put together that kind of summarizes that idea of trying to get some sort of significant reduction, if not complete reduction, to get to that 50 or 45%, whatever the requirement is. And is this something we want to look at across the board for all residential districts? Or something you just want to look at specifically for the single-family residential districts? And just to note that we are at 60 and 65% for like the R3 and R4. I think R2 and R3 are 60%, and R4 allows 65% impervious surface. So, if we wanted to say this is just something that we want, flexibility we want to allow on single-family lots versus multifamily duplex lots. Never have to tell them, you know, single-family ones on them as well, if they're allowed in all the districts. If we want to differentiate that out at all, let me know. Across the board, make it.
That is so. It seems fair.
Okay.
If the goal is to reduce, then reduce, I don't think, right?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Any information?
Um, I do have a rezoning application that has been submitted for a property. He was not available for the March public hearing, so we pushed it to the April, April meeting. So, we'll publish for it to be a public hearing at the April meeting, and the village train, and I'll be taking a look at that. But it's a property on Elm Avenue next to the McNeil Professional Building.
It'll be our first one?
So, yeah. So, kind of a new thing. Rezoning, map amendment. Stretch our little muscles with what we learned after.
All right, all right.
Second.
All right. Thanks, everyone.